Want for the pledge of allegiance?
Here we are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it Easter again?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our planning board meeting tonight, August 8th, 2017. The proposed agenda, 7 o'clock board business, we'll do bills and payroll. Oh, I forget how much I really need these now. We'll review the minutes, subdivision contract, and then at 7:15, we'll have an informal discussion on 529 King Street with Virginia Wood. At 7:30, we have the master plan implementation committee update with Mike Zeldin. At 7:50, we're going to have a discussion on the sign logo from Neil Sinola's up at the point. And at 8 o'clock, the senior affordable housing bylaw moving the discussion forward. Also, we expect to get some updates from Green International through the evening and go from there. Oh, boy. So bills and payroll sent around?
There's a payrolls ready for your approval and signature.
Okay.
And the minutes that I sent out were draft minutes from July 20th meeting.
So I have read those minutes. Anybody else had a chance to review them?
So, yeah, I have. Yeah, they look good.
Okay.
That's always.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
As presented.
You got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and then there were several construction inspection reports, Durkey Farm Estates, site visit number 18 and 19, Cooper Farms, site visit number three, and then a couple more came in. The Orchard Macintosh Lane, site visit number 20, that was the final paving.
Right.
Just this week, just end of last week. So those inspection reports.
You have a career in photography if you want to get out of consulting. Who's photo back?
Oh, Tom's. Yeah.
I wish I'd put my name on it. Some Whitman Sampler candy? Would you like some, dear?
No, thank you, my dear. I'm fine.
Thank you, sir.
I was always told Martha, accept candy from strange man.
I'll tell you a story later.
Did the bills get around? Thank you. So if you've had the opportunity to review the construction inspection report?
I have.
And rest of the board had an opportunity to come?
Quick luck, yes.
Right, a fair amount of it. Little disappointing, isn't it? We want to get an update on them. How far above average are we on rainfall this year? Is that enough?
Almost not, right?
Way above, yeah.
Does anybody know? Is Siri here? She knows almost everything.
Siri?
Yeah.
Who's that?
Alexa doesn't know nothing.
Who's Siri?
Who's Siri?
Is that your girlfriend?
She's everyone in America's girlfriend.
What?
Never mind. What, am I actually somewhere ahead of in technology on somebody?
I can do okay Google for you.
Could you? Could you ask it how what the the average rainfall in Massachusetts up to this point in time is and where we're at now?
I'll do it silently, too.
I don't know how to do that.
That'd be terrific, getting back to the board's business.
It is part of our business.
The rainfall?
Yeah. See what they're up against, see if it's just an anomaly. Okay, sorry, honey.
So subdivision reports, looking to get a motion to accept them. Have a good chance.
Well, they're the reports of our consultants, so there's really nothing to accept or change. So I'll motion that we accept them for the record.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That way I can add to the record that, you know, date that they that you reviewed and accepted them.
Reviewed and filed for the record.
Yep, absolutely. For Durkey Farm Estates, we got four estimates for the what we've been calling the third-party review, including in your meeting packets, the information on the four of those. Summary email on the front.
I've had an informal discussion with Maran and Mark and Anthony, Assistant Town Manager. And after reviewing those and also getting a recommendation from the cons comm committee, and they had a chance to look at these as well, it would be my recommendation that this board go Geo Insight for the third-party consultant based on their abilities in their proposal.
I will move that as a, we need to vote on this, right?
Yes.
So moved.
Just go to the table.
Geo Insight it is.
Okay. And then there also the last one in the passage.
And you're happy with what they're?
What they're proposing.
Their site visits, their?
Their approach?
Well, I read up to the last part of them or whatever, that they do seem a little more. Oh, exacting in their in their approaches, right?
Correct.
Well, I'll follow the recommendation of the chairman and the vice chairman. Are you the vice chairman?
The vice chair is not here.
Now, the Geo Insight proposal has a lot of work listed in there. The are we approving all that work, all those tasks?
We're approving the tasks that are required to get the answers to the questions we're looking for, i.e. the pond issue and what is causing the water to fill up.
Wouldn't we wouldn't we drop back and ask the contractor to give us that information and just have Geo Insight?
No, we wouldn't because we're not, we've already had that discussion with the contractor. And in the discussion with the contractor's engineer, we came to the conclusion that a third-party consultant at this point would be advantageous. Would be advantageous, I think.
To both parties.
But I still don't get it. Why why wouldn't the contractor come up with the?
Solutions to the problems that his engineer hasn't been able to figure out yet? This is probably why.
Well, you know, Peter, it's not just, you're dealing with Mother Nature here.
I understand.
So so everybody that deals with, you know, site conditions can, you can run into problems during site. That's the most, that's where the biggest unknowns are. So you can't blame a professional for trying a strategy based on information that we all had at hand and and, you know, find out that that strategy didn't work. So at that point, the, you know, it's in my experience that the contractor proposes another remedy for the situation. It's their project. And and we would just have our consultant do a peer review of their their analysis instead of this, this, these guys are coming up with a solution. Now, what happens if these guys are wrong? Where does it where does the liability lie? And if these guys are wrong and they and the retention ponds fail again, who who's responsible? Who's going to pick up?
We're not looking at the retention ponds, we're looking at the pond that's been created by the construction of the road or the striking of a vein of water, whatever the issue has caused it.
Yeah. But but if what I'm saying is that our consultant should be just doing peer review. We should not be doing design.
We're not asking them to do design. We're trying to find out the answer.
Well, that's what this is. He's doing the modeling, he's doing groundwater influence analysis, hydraulic modeling, he's going to create an opinion letter. He should just be doing peer.
Before you go any further, is it he is a she, just to let you know?
Okay. I refer to he as a generic term. So can we hear from the contractor? Or you had the meeting. Why wasn't that halfway chosen?
The developer's attorney has raised her hand several times, so if you give me an opportunity, I'll let her speak.
Oh, please do, because I'm full of questions here.
Thank you. The developer is here and he was presented.
Sherry, could you state your name for the record, please?
Cheryl goes for the record. Developer Dave Guthrie. He's here and he was presented before estimates. And as you all recall, when we had the meeting, it was determined that this scope of review was going to be a review limited to what the engineer came up with on this pond after draining it. It was not to have a peer review consultant design a resolution. So I'm going to let Dave Guthrie speak to that. They've been draining the pond and he's got some information to add.
Yeah, Dave Guthrie, for the record, the pond has, we're talking strictly the farmer's pond at this point.
Yep.
And the overflow of it. We have drained that down almost to the level, I think, that we agreed to conservation. We're at 263.5 now. Our engineer's going out to shoot it tomorrow.
Okay.
To confirm all elevations to get it to the desired elevation. It does not recharge unless it rains. And it only it only recharges the amount of rain we receive. So we believe where he is is accurate, and Green agreed with that initially. And I think you folks requested a third-party to review their findings, their discovery and their data. And I don't think Geo Insight quite does that. I think they take it the next step further, try and create a solution for us, which we're uncomfortable with because we would then, you would then ask us to follow through on their solution and or design, and we would want to be indemnified for that. And I'm not sure the board's in a position to do that for us.
Yeah, that's my, that's where I'm coming from.
So we're not looking for Geo Insight to to design a solution. They proposed it in here, but they also know what the scope is as far as the farm pond. They're offering other services should we so seek them. At this point, we're just looking at the third-party review of the technical data on the farmer's pond. And if they, if we so desire, they'll gather their own data on that pond. That's that's as far as it will go.
So we've asked our attorney and our engineer to give us a feedback on all four proposals and to choose one, those two to choose one collectively with us, so we could come back to you and give us the preferred one, the one we prefer, and then see if you agree with that. So we'd ask you to hold off on your vote for one more meeting, if you would, please.
So the discussion we had before the meeting with Anthony and Maran and myself and Mark was that we're looking for an answer to the question rather than delaying it any longer. So we'd like to move forward with selecting Geotech. We can certainly limit the cost and the scope of the work. There's a representative representative tonight from Geo Insight that we could certainly speak to about it and so you can know what your, what their limits are to the scope of their work.
Correct me if I'm wrong, from the meeting that we were at, we weren't just talking about the farm pond, we wanted to look at the drainage on the whole site as well. We understand the farm pond was the first issue, but we had problems with the detention ponds, we had problems with water coming down the roadways. We wanted somebody to look at all the all the data that had been given from the get-go, not just the pond.
And it was discussed at that meeting that the engineers were in the process of remedying the detention ponds that weren't that weren't.
Working.
Working properly because they had been covered with silt at the bottom. And that's been taken care of.
So the corrections are going to be made, that we're going to allow our consultant, Green, to allow them to make the corrections. They have no value.
We still have had.
They have the same recollection that they're having on that one.
But weren't we looking at where all the water was coming from, all the, where the wetlands are now and how much more water's in the wetlands now than what was talked about earlier?
In the farmer's pond, not necessarily in the detention.
I remember it as the whole area.
That's how the discussion began that evening, but I think we narrowed it down, the third-party review on the issue of the farmer's pond.
Was that this meeting? Him and I?
Well, actually, Mr. Guthrie wasn't in the second meeting. This is engineer.
We, I, I think that we should.
This is Cooper's.
To the chair? I think we should listen to Mr. Guthrie, and I think we should go along with what Mr. Guthrie asks for, because this is his project.
Right. It's his project, but we don't want it to be.
It's our town.
We don't want it to be the town's problem, Richard. The issue we're having right now is that everything else is working out.
Yeah, you got to give him a chance to to resolve the problem.
Correct. But what we're looking for is a third-party opinion because of what has occurred between the engineer that designed the drainage and the peer review from our consultant. We're looking for a third opinion because this board isn't satisfied.
Well, let's.
With the proposals and or the drainage that's occurred on site with the creation of a pond.
Mr. Guthrie is asking for one more meeting to for his people to.
I understand that, but it's been delayed long enough, Richard, in my opinion, and I would like to see if we could get a consultant on board.
There's nothing wrong with holding off for one meeting.
There hasn't been a delay because we told you at the meeting we were going to drain the pond. We got permission from the cons com as to how to drain that pond, and that's exactly what they've been doing. We've had a couple of very major rain swings in between all of that, but they've been working diligently. I think we talked about an eight-day process to do that draining.
It took us longer than that.
And it took longer than that. They now have it, and we talked, we described this at the meeting, we were going to bring it back to the elevations that were pre-existing and then see if it recharges. Their engineers are observing whether it recharges or not. And what they've observed is some siltation on the bottom that's plugged it up, and that came down from the hill, which is what was exactly described as the construction conditions that occurred that caused it to fill in the first place. So we need, they need the time for the engineer to now go in and evaluate how to get the silt off the bottom and what will happen with it after that and then get the peer reviews.
Right, so.
We can't go that fast anyway.
Can I ask us something?
Please, go ahead.
Who are you going to pick out of these for?
I haven't read them all yet, to be honest with you. It was a way. So I've left that the scope with my engineer to see what he agrees to, because ultimately he's, he's on the hook. He's on the hook. His P stamped that plan. He's on the hook. We mortgaged it, which is our right to do. You approved it, your end, your third party, your second-party consultant approved it. We mortgaged it, and now you're saying it doesn't work. But we don't have any basis for that other than it filled up, which we believe was due to siltation running down the road. And when we look at the pond after we've dewatered, after permission from conservation, we see silt on the bottom of this thing, which will impede its infiltration. We believe that. He wants to finalize his discovery to protect his engineering of record, which your then consultant will review. Right now, we have scopes, they vary in what in their definition, and we're saying, well, who's going to take over the responsibility of this pond? Who is going to stamp this pond? Is it going to be your new third-party guy? And then what happens then?
You can't. You can't. We can't. This is, we have to give them the time they need.
If we. They went and complete their discovery because the pond wasn't drained, they couldn't see the bottom.
How long has the pond been full?
A while.
Yes, since November. This has been going on since November.
Yes.
So how many times have you drained the pond?
None.
This is the first time?
We didn't have permission from conservation to work in there.
So on them pumper's that I saw running multiple times, had never a hose was stuck in that?
Prior to that conservation vote, correct.
Okay. And with that being said, it's it's gone down somewhat of on its own at some point in time, and then it fills up again and then it overflows? Or it has never overflowed?
No, it might have moved an inch or two up and down. It would go down, we'd get some rainfall, it would go back up. We tracked that for months, and finally, we went in and said to the board, you need to vote. We need to be able to pump this thing. We can't complete our discovery if you don't vote. They voted to allow us to pump, but that was a few weeks ago.
Yeah, see.
Can't pump within, prior to 24 hours of a rainstorm, 24 hours after a rainstorm. So we couldn't pump consecutive days more than five or six in a row. Then we'd take three days off, have to, we were pumping two to three inches a day, we'd get a two-inch storm, it would go back up, we'd pump it back down. So we originally proposed six hours of pumping a day. They allowed us to do more than that after the next meeting, so we gained on it. We're down, and the only time it goes back up is after rainfall. It's not recharging. And we are still receiving significant rainfall and still have significantly high groundwater, and it's not recharging. So I think their discovery and and what I believe are their theories are going to be proven accurate. And at that point, when they publish that, Green can review it because they're the engineer for their review, and a third-party can look at it to either concur with those two or disagree.
So this is, so this is.
He has a compelling. He's right.
Well, it's not that he's right. Let's just leave the rights and the wrongs out of it. Let's just see if we can get to a position where there, we, our job is not to give him a green stamp whenever he wants, or to take everything he says as the golden rule. Our job is to see what, you know, we take the engineer at his word, they create something, they did something, and it's not working quite properly yet. Now we need to find out why. So if this is part of it, okay. What I would suggest, though, is that a third-party is going to look at this one way or the other. And if we if we turned around and these guys have done their work presumably, and I can accept that they have, the biggest number is 55 to 13, the smallest number is 25, $3,000 is about the is about the end of it. Now, if they're happy with Geo, I would more than likely say that if, is this, is this Christine, are you here? I think if she was willing to to do her job, which would be the highest of the lowest, you know, I mean, the $3,000 range, to go over there, what they've decided, what Green looks at and decides, and if they concur and you concur, could you keep your price at that to 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 look at this? And would you be accept? And again, if it comes to the point where there's got to be more testing, then you're going to agree to that? We can keep moving here if I think if this is the way we go.
I like what you're proposing so far.
Wait a minute, please. Let him answer.
I think what's critical here is you need to define the scope of work. And I think in having the engineer record to.
What's your scope of work?
Complete the discovery and and define the scope of work, whether it be in conjunction with with.
Your engineer.
Green and our engineer, but define that scope of work for review, and then you can have your four, or if you have a favorite in that in that group, you could have that engineer agree to that, define scope and put a final number on it. We're not, we're not here fighting over the 3,000 to 2,500 to the 4,000. That's not the issue, guys. The issue was can you define the scope appropriately? To be that it's strictly third-party review of what the engineer of record is proposing.
No, no, wait. See, that's where you're wrong. She shouldn't be looking at what the engineer is proposing. She's trying to find out where the water's coming from. That's what she's trying to find out, why that pond is full, why it's there in the first place. It's not part of the drainage structure, it never was, as you guys think it was always going to be dry there. It's wet there and it's not going dry. She's going to find out where the water's coming from. That's what she's supposed to be finding out.
Can I, can I ask, can I talk now? Mark, why would you want the town to try to resolve a problem that's clearly the contractor's problem?
Because.
It's going to be our problem.
It's going to be our.
How do you know it's going to be our problem? What if they resolve it?
You've got a house right now that's nine feet away from the water.
How do you know?
Richard, it's a lake. It's not a pond, it's a lake.
How do you know they're not going to resolve it?
How are they going to resolve it?
He's supposed to.
It's been that way since.
It's been that way since November.
That don't you understand?
Richard, the roads flood, there's water everywhere.
It's not our job.
Look at, look at, here, we're going to play a game.
It's not our job.
Just wait a second.
To find out where the water comes from.
Wait a second.
I want to finish.
No, it's because he says, you say, back and forth. I don't know, no, we're going to play a game. You start, there's, there's a talking stick.
No, I have one thing.
You all done? Give it back to him. Now you get to say something.
All I'm trying to say is when we had the meeting, we wanted to determine where the water in that pond was coming from.
Let them tell us.
No.
It's their project, Mark. As soon as we cross that line, we can't go back. We take on liability that the town doesn't, doesn't want.
We absolutely can. We want another set of eyes to look at it and make it.
Then you have to give them a chance to.
We've given them a chance.
No, you haven't.
Yes, we have, Richard. It had since November.
Right? Yeah.
No.
November today.
We couldn't do anything in there. How can you complete your discovery if you can't see the bottom of the pond? We couldn't pump it without permission from conservation. So how can you say we haven't done anything in 10 months regarding that? Yes, nothing happened, but we weren't delaying the process. Nothing happened, but we didn't have permission to work in that area, which is a defined BVI.
We have to give them the time that they need. If we if we shortchange them on time, there's.
Why wouldn't conservation give you permission earlier?
That's a question.
Taken on responsibility for the town that we we should not be doing. And and that, in the meantime, that'll give us a chance to send this back to Geo. And, and that, in the meantime, that'll give us a chance to send this back to GEO Insight and have them correct the scope of work to the scope that we're talking about, not-
Mr. Guthrie's proposal is that the engineer come up with why, do the discovery to come up with why that pond held water and how it gets remedied, so-
Who's engineer?
Mr. Guthrie's engineer.
His?
That, then, will be reviewed by Green, and then those two will be reviewed by the peer review, third-party, that, and that was the agreement we made when we were together. We said we were gonna dewater that pond first, and the engineer was gonna do the discovery.
At the time we had the meeting, conservation still hadn't granted you guys permission to pump it down. So, we didn't know what the solution was gonna be, because we didn't know if they were gonna let you pump it down. There was up in there, they were gonna say it was now a new existing condition. There was all kinds of discussions going on. They've obviously now granted permission some meetings ago, and they've granted more time for pumping. So, we're getting to the point where we can get an answer to what's causing the problem. I agree with all that. But in our meeting, we also agreed that we were gonna get a third-party to evaluate why there was water being retained in that pond.
After seeing what the other engi, with his engineer came up with.
I don't recall that in the conversation.
Because, because of course they're gonna double-check what he comes up with, but, but-
So, what I would like, so, I would like us, as a board, to hire, to, to make the recommendation for the third-party review and let them go ahead and take a look at the bottom of the pond right alongside with your engineer. They don't have to work together. They can be there at the same amount of time. We're gonna get an opinion from them. We're gonna get an opinion from your engineer, and then we're gonna have Green International review your engineer's findings.
Ed, can I speak?
Who's gonna, who's gonna review this engineer? The third? What if they have difference of opinions? Which one prevails? Which PE prevails in this situation? The one of record or the new one? What if Green agrees with Hancock and GEO Insight comes up with a third, a third, a third opinion? All three PEs licensed and on the line here. Which one prevails?
It's like attorneys, you know, I'm asking all the same questions. They're all gonna have a different answer. I think that then that lays on the boards. We're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to pick.
We're gonna be the one that decides.
So, why would we inject ourselves? Why would we allow the-
You're gonna take over ownership of the pond at that point.
Yeah.
Say that again?
You'd be taking over ownership of the pond at that point.
That's right.
Eventually, we're gonna anyway.
Right, eventually, we're gonna own it anyway. That's our point. We're trying to protect the town. We're trying to figure out if that pond is gonna exist for a long period of time, or is it gonna be able to be controlled? If those are actual real yield lots or not? So, I'm getting back to the basis. Do you have 30 lots or not?
In a typical peer review, the peer review consultant works with the engineer for the developer, and they, they work out where there are differences of opinions. That's all he's looking to do. He wants his engineer to start looking at it and look at the process and propose a resolution. Then the other two engineers can look at it, and they can work together on it.
That's exactly how we always do it.
Of course it is.
This, why this third-party now? I've, I've never seen this done.
Because there's outstanding circumstances that we've never had to deal with out there on that subdivision, and we're questioning where all the water's coming from, and we need to find out what's going on out there, just like you just said.
Well, well, let them, let them tell us.
The reality is that you asked for a third because you were dissatisfied that Green was agreeing with Guthrie's engineer.
That was part of it, yes.
And that's the reality. So, two engineers are already on the same page, and you wanted a third to try to, to try to question that. And, and that's a problem, because as Mr. Guthrie says, how many engineers are you gonna get before you get the answer you want?
That's a, Mark, that's a real problem.
That's not the answer.
That's a problem.
The answer is, we, nobody could agree with where all the water was coming. There was a ton of water out there, and the drainage that was out there was not working.
Green and Hancock were on the same page, in writing.
They, they all agreed. They all said it came from the construction damming up the road. They all agreed with that, where it was coming from. They all agreed that it wasn't recharging. Nobody has seen the bottom yet because we just pumped it. So, we're just trying to get some discovery from the bottom.
If you, are you telling me that when you're all done, the water's gonna travel in different directions?
No, but the ponds are gonna function as designed.
Your, your retention and detention, whatever, will function fine, but the pond that's been created by the road that was installed-
Wasn't supposed to be there.
Wasn't supposed to be there.
No, that pond was pre-existing.
If that had run off, it wasn't supposed to receive.
It's not part of the drainage, and it's-
Curbing wasn't in. Non-7 wasn't stabilized.
Well, it is now.
And it silted up.
It's-
So, you didn't get the infiltration that you should receive. So, now the bottom needs to be cleaned out after dewatering.
Wait a minute. The pond is filling, whether it's a concrete, you know, pond-
Once we put, once we put the curving in, down the entire length of the roadway, the pond didn't increase unless it rained. No questions asked.
That's interesting.
We submit that weekly data to conservation. The pond did not increase once we put the curving in. No questions asked.
Once you did put the curving in-
Correct.
The pond never went any higher.
Unless it rained.
And when it rained, where'd all that water come from? Just what was permitted to fall in?
If we got two inches of rain in a rainfall event, we picked up two inches. If it was coming from another source, we would've received more than two inches.
You had water coming over the roadway.
You don't know, Mark.
We were there. We have pictures of it, Richard.
Yeah, but you don't know what, what the hydraulics were.
That's what we're trying to find out.
Right, that's why we're hiring-
That's why we're trying to find out, Richard, what the hydraulics-
Never done a third-party before. Soon as, as soon as we go down that road, there'll be no, no turning back, and-
You know what? Sometimes you gotta go down new roads to find new solutions.
Yeah, but that's, that's gonna put the town at a, at tremendous liability, because we're gonna own, from, from the day that we hired that engineer, we're gonna own anything that happens to that pond. And if it doesn't work, we're still gonna own it. Look, right now, the contract-
How are we gonna, explain that knowledge? How, how are we gonna own it, Richard?
As soon as we pull, as soon as we pull a third-party into the project.
Yeah? That means we're buying the pond?
Yeah, that, so-
Mr. Chair, when's your next meeting?
September 7th.
So-
What I, what I was gonna propose tonight was that this board recommend that you hire GEO Insight for the discovery on the pond and to get to work as soon as possible, right alongside with your engineer, whether they're there at the same time or not, so they can do the same discovery that your engineer is doing. They don't have to review what your engineer has found out. They'll give us their information without any bias. They won't have seen any information proposed from your engineer or from Green International. That way, we get a clean third-party review. All right? And from that, if there's conflicting information, it'll be up to this board to decide what information to take as record.
Two questions, if I may.
Sure.
One, why GEO Insight? And two, why is that scope substantially different than the other four bids we received? One from the one we weren't comfortable with and the new three ones? Why is the scope substantially different?
So, again, we're gonna discuss with GEO Insight what the scope is gonna be, which is gonna be to do the discovery in the pond to find out why it isn't draining without any influence from your engineer or Green International.
And why GEO Insight?
Because after reviewing all of the proposals, we felt like, and I say we, Mark and I-
And conservation.
And conservation made the recommendation that they would be the best selection for the review.
Based on their scope or based on their, their resume?
Based on their abilities.
So, you, that's fine, you're choosing GEO Insight. Now, we just need to come back and define the scope. Is that correct?
I think we've defined the scope, that they're gonna try to figure out what this, that the issue is with that pond without any influence from your engineer or Green International.
Okay, I think we'd like to see that scope formalized in writing so that we could agree to it.
Okay. But if we vote tonight that we've selected GEO Insight, you're gonna hire them, and that as long as the scope comes in to what you will accept, then we can move forward. So, there's no delay till September 7th.
Ed?
Please wait.
Especially if you're getting down to the bottom. We want somebody else to look at it.
Just for a second, just, just, just-
That's all.
Yeah, I just need to see the scope.
Sure. So, what we're saying is if, if we vote, if you agree to the scope, the vote will already have been taken, and we can keep moving forward. You don't have to be here September 7th.
You don't need to review the scope that I agreed to?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Because he's, if, that's fair, for, for, if we decide that we wanted to, and I'm not sure exactly, I really don't know how she's gonna go about this, whether they're gonna drill holes or whether they're gonna look at, you know, dig pits and see what the, the transfer-
Hydraulics.
I, I don't know how she's gonna go about that. But if, if, if what she does propose, and it comes to a point, you say, okay, I can agree to that, it'll give me a better insight, perhaps, what she does, so that my engineer might look at it a little differently, and Green might look at it a little differently. But there's, her scope will be decided, and you will agree to that scope.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we all get together?
Wait, wait, wait.
No, 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 no. Look, we can end this.
Shutting me up and letting Mark go.
I think the scope needs to follow the same format that you use when hiring a third, when hiring Green International, so to speak.
Okay, I agree.
It's to review the design engineer's proposal.
No, we don't want the design engineer's proposal to-
So, in, in taking on a third-party to then create their, to, to go out and generate their own data and create a solution, you've then taken over the liability.
We don't want them-
We're not creating a solution. We're just looking for what the problem is.
Mark is talking, I'm gonna talk.
We want their own, we just want their opinion of what the problem is. We're not looking for them to design, design a solution. So, so if we vote tonight to just accept GEO as the third-party, and then we'll get a scope together, and then we can vote on the scope at the next meeting. Fair to you?
Is it fair to him?
Well, I think Mark had a good point there, where we all get in the room and try and wrestle over the scope.
Right, we need to do it right away. Sooner or better. We should all get together, once we agree to hire GEO, have another meeting with Mr. Guthrie, myself, you, the woman from there, Green as well.
Let me offer you this. As engineering houses, we're as comfortable with GEO Insight as any of the others.
Okay.
We can start there.
Okay.
Now, can I speak?
All right, so that's one minute, Richard. You can speak, okay? One minute. So, can we pick a time to get together for that meeting? And-
You're going for five days?
Yes, I'm leaving for five days, but I'll be back Monday. So, anytime next week, would you have an opportunity to meet next week for an hour or so?
I should be able to. I would want my, the senior director of engineering to be on this one.
Okay.
I'm afraid Joe's gonna be up other engineer on here, so I need to check it down, and the next week, today's Tuesday.
That's, that's fair. We all sit down, come up with it.
Ma, so you can email the group and get a select time to meet. Anthony, you'll make yourself available, I hope. Oh, you're traveling. Don't worry, don't worry. Maybe Keith can be available.
No, we'll do it. We'll let, we'll keep it going.
It'll be a few hour difference, but he's agreed to this, so we can argue whatever we want.
Can I speak?
Please.
Through the chair. I would like to be a part of that meeting.
Can't, because then it'll be a quorum.
Well, then, then we'll knock one person off that meeting. I, I think we need a fresh set of eyes on this, on this project.
I disagree, Richard.
It's, you and Mark, I think it should be you and me.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Richard.
I have far more site experience in working with consultants than, than anyone else on this board.
You may believe that to be true, but I would disagree with that as well. So, what I'm saying is, is that we've, we've got a working group, we've got a working group on this one. We're gonna keep moving forward. I appreciate your tenacity and your desire to help find a solution and wanna be a part of it. In this scenario, we're gonna keep moving forward.
Before about being a part of it. I'm very disappointed.
That's not why I'm on this board.
The second reason, I think, we should, the second point I wanna bring out is, this, this, this scope that, that GEO, Geotech has given us, doesn't have anything to do with what we're gonna do.
GEO Insight, right, that's why we're gonna get in a room together and work on the scope.
We need to, we need to have a completely redrawn scope of work.
We just agreed to have a meeting to do that.
I would like to see a completely redrawn scope of work before I vote yes on any one of them.
You will get to see it. You will get to see it.
Alright, before I get a chance to vote on any one of these three.
No.
No, GEO Insight is the one we're selecting.
No, I'm, I'm saying I can't vote on GEO Insight, because they don't have, they haven't given us a...
Can I get a motion to select GEO Insight for...
How much that motion, I wish to...
For the third-party consultant.
Because they, they're, how can you do that with this scope of work? This scope of work has nothing to do with the project.
I've got a motion and a second to select GEO Insight as a third-party consultant. All those in favor by saying aye?
This is a problem, guys.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those not in favor?
This is, this is a problem, guys. This, I'm definitely not in favor of picking, picking an engineer that hasn't given us a scope of work that's applicable to the project.
Chair, can I ask you to either take another motion or put in the record that it's subject to, the selection of GEO Insight is subject to the scope of work being agreed to by all the parties of the subcommittee.
I believe that's what we agreed to earlier.
We agreed to, we even entertain this motion.
And if I could add that the pricing falls in line with your current consultant, because we've lost our ability to competitively bid the scope out now by choosing one in advance of the scope and all the price.
You chose that.
I didn't choose it, you chose it and asked me to agree to it.
And you said you were fine with, with any of them and this one inclusive with the others. That's why I thought that we could move on.
I believe we can. What I'm asking for is that the pricing falls in line with your other consultant.
We can discuss that in the meeting as well.
It has to.
We can discuss that in the meeting as well.
Absolutely has to.
Okay.
Alright, and...
The vote's been taken, the issue's closed.
It's, it's not closed, the last...
The vote's been taken, Richard, the issue's closed.
Yeah, but the, the last point I wanna, I have to bring up, I have a seat at this table.
You do.
Please, is that I think we're absolutely wrong by injecting a third engineer into this, into this process. And Anthony, I, I hope you can help shed some intelligence on this group through maybe, through, through town council, then, to help us so that we don't end up hurting the town in the long run. So I'm asking that as a, as a request, Anthony, when you go back to...
Richard, your request is noted, we've heard it, we're moving on. The vote's been taken, we wanna move to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Martin, we'll email you, we'll negotiate a time for it works for everybody for next week. Okay?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Chopping the pencil a little bit.
I think that proposal says we'll, we'll work with you and hopefully get a...
Correct. We appreciate that.
Alright.
We have a late entry of bond reduction request for McIntosh Lane. He was out for a final paving end of last week. He was a catalyst that has been doing a great job out there. There's still a punch list of items, and we still, Tom Bigelow from Green is still reviewing the exact numbers for the bond reduction, but he agrees with most of them. There are two bonds in place, one for eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and another for a hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred. And he's looking to release all but about about forty thousand dollars to cover the contingency, the as-built plans, and the final cleanup. So, if you're comfortable voting a bond reduction to whatever amount Green agrees to, based on the numbers in the bond.
So, I'd say that, so I've been out there, I live on Griss Mill, it's part of my running route now, so I'm up and down that street often. And it looks good, in my opinion. If Green can come up with a number, I would vote that we would approve it based on the, the work that's been completed for the bond reduction. So I would look for a motion.
Are we close to getting it ready for town meeting approval, or is this kinda always...
That's what he's hoping to do. We should have as-bilts within a couple of weeks.
Most of the work all done?
Most of the work is done, there's still a punch list.
He's being up and stuff, so...
Yep, and I'm recommending you keep the entire contingency and then the amount for the water as-bilts and the regular as-bilts and the process of street acceptance.
But we don't have to have a meeting for that.
That's, the hope is you can do it now rather than waiting till next meeting.
So, this is McIntosh Lane.
Below that, at Griss Mill, behind the apartment.
It's been paved, it's almost complete, there's a punch list and there's some cleanup to be done. And in that, we're just looking to approve a bond reduction based on Green's review or whatever they recommend.
Plus, we'll hold how much?
Could you tell what the number is, again?
Right, there, there are two bonds out there, one is a hundred and forty-eight five, one is eighty-nine eight.
And we'll be drawing those down, but it won't be, it won't be drawn down to zero.
Right, we'll retain contingency for the entire project, plus the amount for the roadway as-built and the water as-built.
Have we, have we talked this, discussed this with Jimmy Clyde, or the engineer, town engineer? Have we got their, their approval on it? Have they seen the road?
They have seen the road, they have been out there. They are, I believe, satisfied with the work that they've seen and the progress.
I'm certainly happy to include that in the contingent vote.
Yeah, 'cause before the money gets released, they, I would absolutely wanna be sure that Jimmy is, is fine with the amount of money and, and the condition of the road.
It's not fair.
Good.
I would agree to that.
I would agree to that.
Plus twenty percent?
I'll, yeah, I'll make that a motion.
Is that what we usually hold, twenty percent above it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the contingency is two.
Right, just one. So, Richard's motion, do we have it reviewed?
I'll second it.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Seven fifteen, informal discussion, five twenty-nine King Street. Virginia Wood.
Hey folks, how you doing?
We're back.
We're here.
I'm back, I'm still here, I never left.
Oh, Virginia, you're having, somebody troubles with that place, yeah. We, we need to...
No, we're, we're on a good footing now. We've got a new restaurant in there that's, the town is gonna absolutely love them. They've got delicious food at a reasonable price. I'm Virginia Wood, I own the property at five twenty-nine King Street, which
Great.
and its last iteration was the Gallery Cafe, and it's now Il Forno. He's leasing from me, and I don't wanna change the site plan review, because that's his issue. But in the site plan review, in the note, the letter I sent you, you'll see that it requires that I contract or that the, let's see, contract with the adjacent property. That creates all kinds of conflict, by specifically requiring that we contract with the adjacent property. That property owner has offered to buy my property at rock-bottom prices, kind of bottom-feeding prices. And by making my property's ability to open and run a business contingent on contracting for access through his property, it creates a conflict. Do you see that?
Yes.
Do you see that?
You're unhappy with the, that he, he's trying to buy it for, for the price he's, he's, he's...
No, this is, this has to do with access.
Well, access and parking.
Secondary means regress.
Secondary, but parking as well, part of the parking is here.
But that's what the site plan says.
Well, the site plan's, the parking is on his property, correct?
No, there, no. There's a sliver of land that he owns, that, that, if you look, Martin's got there, you'll cursor over it right now. So there are four, five parking spaces, a sliver of which are on his land.
How did that occur?
I don't know, it's before my time. Sherry probably would've known the answer to that.
Okay.
And I've owned the property for twenty-five years.
All the parking in the back, everything else is yours.
Yep.
Everything else, so all it is, is those four parking spaces and the way to get in from the back.
Right, but the site plan review doesn't mention the, the parking spaces, it mentions the access. So, and the parking spaces can always be moved around and changed, the issue is the access.
Yeah, 'cause they didn't want you to come in right at the corner of Meeting House Lane. That's why, but when you did the site plan...
Yeah, but CVS's property is before ours.
Yeah, but there's a separate road over there, it's...
That's his property, that's, you're requiring that we have access onto his property. My question is, and I, and I don't want any action on it tonight, but I want you just to sort of think about it. Is, is there another way, or why require a two accesses in? Why couldn't we just open up the one access and make it bigger? Wouldn't that be sufficient?
Who's, Virginia, who's, who's telling you to do this? Who's saying for you to have a second access?
That's the site plan review.
It was a requirement from our site plan review.
It was our, it was us that said that.
Yep.
How long, how long ago was that?
Like twenty-five years ago.
Actually, the two thousand and fourteen site plan approval.
But it keeps getting carried forward.
Right, so it began twenty-something years ago and it would still carry it forward?
Yep.
Any recommendations from the fire department on this?
I have not heard back from them on it.
Okay, but you've put the question out.
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to hear from fire department on it.
I think she needs to come back for a site plan.
I don't wanna, I'm, I'm just throwing the question out there in case, for instance, if Il Forno wants to come back and do something with site plan, then, you know, we can talk about it at that point, but I don't wanna touch it at this point, 'cause he's happy with everything, he's got, he's negotiated with the adjacent property, but ideally, I'd like to move to Maine, I don't wanna be having ties here anymore. And I'd like to be able to sell the property, and as long as I have requirements like that, it, it makes it really difficult to sell.
So the only way to keep, grant you relief from that requirement, though, would be to new, propose a new site plan.
Yeah, understood, understood. But, you know, my tenant right now is very happy, so I don't wanna deal with it.
You can't, you have to look at it because the traffic from the light used to back up past that driveway.
Mark, we have made modifications plenty of times, you can create a reason to make a modification.
They have to come in and formally ask for it, and then they have to research it.
This is informal, so...
Yeah, this is informal, but if they, if they came, if she came in and asked for a modification of the site plan, there's, there's no reason, this, this doesn't rise to the level of a new site plan.
Okay, Peter?
The new tenant has, has made nice with the neighbor?
Yes.
And it appears that the new neighbor, the new tenant would like to purchase the property from you and at a price that is, that is agreeable to you. And if the new neigh, well, then, should the new person buy it, they'd be subjected to the same things now. And if they've made frie, made nice with the neighbor, I see you, you have a clear, there's no reason for any of these discussions, correct?
Exactly, that's what I'm just throwing the ball out there.
Where in Maine are you thinking of going?
Uh, small island off the coast, off the coast.
Nice, can own it all by yourself? No neighbors, God love ya.
Yeah. Two mile long.
Very good.
The other piece of the discussion that I wanted to talk about relates back to the master plan. And as you're going forward, looking for strategies to meet some of your master plan goals, to support small businesses in town, especially those in the common, you know, would it be willing, would you be willing to consider reducing the number of seats for parking?
Yes.
For restaurants?
Yes.
That's something that I think would be very helpful going forward.
Yeah.
And then the other piece of that, which I didn't include in the, in the letter, but I've broached the subject with the Board of Selectmen, and since we have a couple of folks here, I thought I'd throw it out there too, which is the town, every town, requires that small businesses and businesses fill out what amounts to P and L for tax purposes, property tax purposes. And I have not filled it out historically, because, A, it's very long form, it's something like two pages, three pages. Two, it's information that I don't like to share with folks. And I understand that everything is hush-hush, and no one would ever say a word, but I've worked in planning offices, I've worked in town halls, I know that that's not the case, and the word gets out on the street, oh, this business is this and this and this and this. So, may not be the case at Littleton, but in other towns that I've worked for, it has been the case. So I've never filled it out. So I got hit with a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee for not having filled out the P and L that the town told.
And what is this in relation to us?
Master plan strategy supporting small businesses. Going forward, you might wanna scale that fee.
So what I would recommend is that you have a meeting with the Master Plan Implementation Committee and discuss it with them.
You're the planning board that's controlled the master plan, so I'm throwing out there.
We do it along with the select, but the master plan...
I've, I've sent a letter, thank you for hearing me.
The chairman's right behind you, Mr. Zelik would be happy to talk to you about that.
Yeah, I sent them, I sent them.
She's absolutely right, all planning goes through us.
This isn't, that's not a planning issue.
Master plan is.
That's not, but that's not, what she's talking about is not a master plan.
She is, she's talking about things that we could implement in the master plan that would...
That's a tax.
Strategies to achieve the goals of supporting small businesses, that falls under that.
That's, that's a good idea, right, but the, the thing that you need to fill out.
Thank you for hearing me, I don't want to take any more of your time.
No, it has, it has to do with what, the tax basis of the town, so I can understand their reasoning, I understand yours, if anybody hates forms, we're ahead of you.
But why does IBM get fined the same amount as, as the Gallery Cafe? I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
Should we, should we raise them both?
Its maximum level is allowed by the state is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Good. What does the state?
The town can set the fee.
How long does it take you to fill out that form?
I don't know, I've never filled it out. It's information that's, I mean, it's a P and L, you're, you're putting all your dirty laundry, or clean laundry, if the case may be, out there for potentially everybody to see if it fell into the wrong hands.
Virginia's right, in Cambridge, I have a business store that I rent, and every year they send me a, a form to fill out that's, that I'm gonna tell them how much I make on the store, and what my expenses are on the store, and every year I throw it in the trash. That's my business.
That's right, so you, you have the right to do it.
So make a phone call to Cambridge, you'll get a bill for two-hundred-and-fifty bucks.
And you pay the, you pay the two-fifty?
No, it's not, I, I think it's a very unfair way of asking the assessor to, to assess businesses.
Well, I, I, and I think, you know, yes, there's a cost for not filling it out, and I get that. But is it fair that IBM is charged the same amount?
It's the state and it's infinite wisdom, but what?
No, it is not the state.
It's the town?
It's the town, the town sets the fee, the maximum amount allowed is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The town can set the fee based on whatever scales, whatever they wanna do.
Does the town change the, the rate that you should pay depending upon what your P and L states?
No.
It doesn't make any difference, you make a million bucks?
If I don't fill out that form on two-fifty...
No, if, if your business makes a million dollars...
Right.
You pay more taxes.
Or if it makes fifty thousand dollars, do you pay more money if you make a million?
In, in taxes, yes.
Yeah.
More than you think your two-hundred-and-fifty dollars worth? See, that's why there's, there's a catch-twenty-two there, isn't there?
It's, it's not a...
I understand what you say, I hate forms, man.
It depends on whether you're a progressive tax person or not. If you are a progressive tax person, this is not the way to do it. If you are okay with a corporation making lots more money and paying a higher profit tax, that's fine, that's the progressive way of doing it. If you think that's fair, then apply it to the fee as well.
Oh, I see a reason, good reason. Makes sense.
Good point.
Thank you.
Virginia, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia.
I thought she was gonna knock you out with that tap on the head.
O'Neil Cinema signs and logos.
What about...
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over Mike, I'm sorry. Michael Zellman, Master Plan Implementation Committee.
We're like behind schedule, aren't we?
Big time.
Through the chair?
No, I got nothing to say.
Answer your question, forty-six inches.
God love you.
Okay.
That's how much we're above?
No, that's the average rainfall for this area, it's forty-six inches. Could be forty-five, but it's forty-six.
Do you have any idea how much rain we have received yet so far this year?
That wasn't divulged, that's not what the question was. The question was our average rainfall through the years. This may be the beginning or the part of a, of a non-average year. So if you're talking about weather, that's one thing, if you're talking about climate, you gotta look longer.
Right, we got four inches of rain three weeks ago on Monday.
So anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity to bring you up to date. And the implementation committee, as you know, was formed shortly after the steering committees, the master plan had been assembled and approved by the town, and, have the next slide? What came out of that was this, and this is the town's plan, this is not the implementation committee's plan. The reason I'm using negative is to make it crystal clear, this is not the planning board's plan, this is not the Board of Selectmen's plan, it's the town's plan. And in here is pretty well, sometimes distilled, sometimes not, in some detail, what the town is interested in becoming and what it is. So, the book, as we might call it, contains at least two broad parts. One is the inventory, which is very instructive to understand where the town is at the moment. And that has moved on somewhat, just from your earlier discussion, we know it's moved on. And the second part is where we'd like to go. Have the next one. At the very end, or on page, if you're actually using the book, page one-seventy-four is followed by something, five printouts, five pullouts. Online, this won't show up until, because the pagination is different, so those of you who go for the master plan online will find that it's much bigger. But in any event, the point is, is that you'll see five pullouts that distill the sixty-seven recommendations that the town would like to see fulfilled. And this is where the implementation committee enters the scene. It's our job, as the famous commander said, to make it so. Have the next slide. The committee met and decided on a process to make it so. And we, after investigating what other towns have done, and consulting with quite a number of, number of town managers and other administrators, as well as citizens of other towns, as well as this one, we chose the, as it were, the project-by-project approach. That is, we're literally, not literally, but going to look at the pullouts with, obviously with background, and use that as our guide for determining projects. Now, these are, require actions and contributions made by every town board, committees, commissions, town government, departments, as well as contractors and consultants as needed. And the reference along the slide, the number forty-six refers specifically to item number forty-six of the sixty-seven recommendations, which are, by the way, ordered by theme, not by, shall we say, alleged significance. Now, at the moment, since we've met, the, our committee is, is already in the process of directly engaging with every committee that's involved directly or directly in what we're trying to implement, which means just about every committee in town. And what we're, what we are interested in doing is setting up a system, a systematic way of visiting with and discussing and joining, as it were, with other committees to try to fulfill the various mandates called out in the recommendations, according to the interests and skill sets of each committee. Next one. So, we are looking for and emphasizing both communication and exchange, which sounds easy, but is very difficult even in a town of this size. However, we're very, very pleased to report that not only has the planning board, this board, joined in on agreeing to follow the goals, especially set for it, which were, shall we say, in terms of planning and execution, quite extensive. But the Board of Selectmen have also, not only endorsed it, but also handed out assignments to various members who are going to take, as it were, responsibility for various key areas of the recommendation. So, a, two of the key boards already have stepped forward and made the commitment to the master plan. At this point, I'd like to emphasize a point I'm gonna be making repeatedly, is that at some point, we have to stop talking about a master plan, we have to start realizing this is the town's plan that should be integrated into the ordinary operations of the town. This is fairly easy to say, more difficult to do, because it means a slightly different way of approaching a plan. And it could result in the reform and make the whole operation of the town a little, shall we say, efficient. Not necessarily easier, but a little bit more efficient. And what I mean by that is simply fewer pop-up projects, and number two, hopefully, moving away from, it's my turn, you've had your bicycle, now I want my motorcycle. In other words, not go through a sequence where we have each special interest believing that their operation must be followed after someone else has gotten theirs. The issue should be what works best for the most people in the town. And that's what the plan really lays out, and that's what the citizens of this town wanted. They emphasized this in every single form, every single meeting we had with them. They wanted a stepwise, sensible approach, a prudent New England approach to management of the town and its, and its future. The next committee, and we're already started meetings with them, is the FinCom. And the reason for this will become very obvious in the subsequent material I present, and that is that the implementation committee is very, very conscious of costs and benefits. So, the town has limited resources, we cannot spend money as we see necessary would like to. We have to spend money in the way that we can, or not. So, in our interactions with the committees, we are going to try to introduce the, the notion that proposals coming forward should always have some, some awareness of actual cost range. What is this gonna cost, what are the benefits? If we don't do this, what do we lose, if we do do it, what do we gain? Mere proposals to move forward on a project have to, have to take into account what's of benefit to the town as a whole, rather than particular parts. Have the next one. Now, there's sixty-seven recommendations, and they're probably for sure gonna outlive me. So what we've done in the committee is select what are called foundational, as well as first-step implementation steps. These were chosen on the basis of the fact that it gave us an opportunity to exercise our systems of interaction. We've set up a system, we would like to run it, in order to do that, we wanna undertake projects that are digestible at the beginning, and then we can move on. The second, a lot of projects can't be started in town that are on the list unless certain foundations are made. foundations are made. This committee actually plays a key role because a great number of those changes that are looked for by the town involve zoning, and how we regulate zoning, and how we enforce it, and how we basically try to meet the point of contact between free enterprise and what benefits to the town. These are very, very difficult points of contact. Tonight was a small example. There are other big ones having fallen under the rubric of housing. So these are what we'll call the initial seven. One is not more important than the other, nor are they necessarily more important than those that are still waiting to come onto the list. They are simply the ones that we've started out with. Some of them are very, very obvious and already underway. There's a reference there to each of them that appears in the recommendations. The Littleton Common Sewer, zoning assessment and diagnostics, and just to repeat, because we'll be coming back to this. The zoning operation consists at this moment of two parts. One is a diagnostic, which basically asks the question, to what extent is a particular regulation in town in compliance with state and federal laws? We can't be out of compliance. We've got to be with the legal requirements. The second one has more to do with moving forward, and that is, what are the weaknesses and strengths of our current regulatory and zoning requirements? What can we do to strengthen the weak ones, and what new ones should we bring in to make us even stronger to reach the objectives here? Tonight is an example, as you're going to see in a moment, of at least one of them where we're making changes. It looks like it could be one that strengthens the ability of our town to reach certain goals. The next one permeates practically every single other aspect of the plan, and that's transportation. In fact, transportation, as far as the community is concerned, is quite essential. And I'm not talking about just cars and buses. I'm talking about bicycles, sidewalks, trails, et cetera. There is practically nothing in this town that isn't affected one way or other by movement of things and people. Housing. In particular, we're looking at what we'll call targeted development. And I have to say that the town is really, has reached a consensus on wanting to have diversified types of housing, as well as diversified costs of housing available to not only the residents, but others who might want to move here. Next. Space needs the town office building. Now, this looks rather innocuous. What's going on here? Well, it turns out that this is a very valuable asset that we're staying in the middle of. And how it gets used can affect senior services, parks and recreation, a community center, the list goes on, and involves also the prudent use of limited resources. So this assessment and how this town office, how this town office building will function in the future is very important to this town, and it's a very basic issue that has to be addressed and resolved. Next is historical survey. Although this looks like fairly simple, it isn't, because there's a lot of rich history in this town that has been uncovered, that there's more. And this could affect how we think about the re-imagination and revitalization of the common. So this is one of the things that's nearing completion, that is, the historic survey. And this will be available for a plan for the common, which includes the sewer and many other components. The next and last is to include the, quote, "master plan project costs" into yearly budgeting process. What this merely says is that instead of having, as usual, projects like this sit outside, we want to incorporate these projects into the cost analysis system in town and enhance that process further by looking more deeply at cost-benefit and impact. Next. I just want to assure everyone here, including this board, that the seven are the initial seven. There are a lot more to follow. We have at least 60-plus, so they'll all come. Have the next one. I'm pausing here because the implementation committee has spent a fair amount of time discussing and taking into account the fiscal responsibility that the town administration and the town government has to its residents regarding how resources are used. And again, I'm repeating the necessity for projects to have linked with them as quickly as possible. How much something costs, the cost-benefit, and what's the side, what happens if we don't do a particular project? Have the next one. And again, this is part of the discussion that's ongoing with the FinCom, where we are attempting to engage, we will be engaging them to begin bringing to the town the idea of doing analysis that covers both cost and impact, early, mid, and long term. These are very difficult to do technically because of the small size of Littleton and the difficulty obtaining meaningful data to do meaningful, what we'll call, real 21st-century economic modeling. However, it turns out there are other techniques that can be used that don't require in all instances the highly granular information you need to do that. And that's the route we're probably going to follow. Have the next one. So here are the projects, very briefly. The first one is Littleton Common. And here, the sewer project under the, with the driving force behind it being the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, the sewer project is already underway with a contractor who is looking at feasibility and cost. Now, as most of us know, the common area properties are owned by private individuals. The town itself has little or no control over the bulk of that space. So those discussions have to go forward with a strategy in mind. And our committee is suggesting that the Board of Selectmen and/or the Planning Board and other interested parties seriously consider the hiring of a outside consultant, not necessarily to tell the boards what to do, but to offer up scenarios that they might not have thought about, and also to look at situations that, again, may not easily come to mind. One good example would be trying to understand the impact, and this is just one of about 15 that could be easily identified, the impact of the success, the relative commercial success at the point. What kind of positive leverage does that give to the strategic thinking about what you do to revitalize the common? That's just one example, and why it's being offered as a suggestion to the Board of Selectmen. And we ourselves are very interested in participating, obviously, for obvious reasons, in that process. So for that, we are requesting, I'll go through the budget in a few moments, we're requesting no more than a $50,000 investment in such a consultant, as, once we have identified very clearly what's the work we have in mind in particular, and the techniques that should be followed to do this. Have the next one. This one is already, as it were, pretty much underway, or at least the discussion of it has progressed, and that is for zoning. It's one of the larger, more important projects, although we're starting out in town with it small. This is something that the Planning Board is undertaking, namely, to assess the zoning bylaws with respect to not only the strengths and weaknesses for achieving the master plan, but also to do diagnostics to ensure compliance with state and federal laws. We're proposing a consultant be hired for the strengths and weaknesses component, but this could be discussed and should be discussed with the Planning Board and other interested parties on moving this one forward. And the idea is to share those findings, once they're made, with all the boards and stakeholders, so this could be used effectively in planning for the future and executing those plans. I made a special slide for transportation. Just keep clicking through. They'll come up. Mainly because I've only picked up four of the components for transportation. There are many more. And there are all, there are many diverse committees, different committees, looking at different aspects of this, everything from trails to parking, all of which, and trains, all of which are very, very important, and are actually have, be worthwhile for both transparency reason, and also to keep the public informed, to have a single point of, shall we say, communication and interaction. So we're suggesting very strongly that the Board of Selectmen, and I hope with your support, propose a coordination or basically an umbrella group that can act as a point of contact between the community and everyone working on transportation. And that way, the various deliberations of the committees, including yours and all the others, can all be gathered in one place so that we can have a real town discussion, keep people informed. So when we come to town meeting, people understand very clearly what's at stake, make it more transparent. This one, as we've all learned going through the process, is a very, very important and large one. It's very big. We're starting out with something on a relative scale, which is small but extremely difficult, and that is targeted housing. In this case, targeted senior housing. And I have to say that the senior population that I've met with over the course of the several months, both in the forums and elsewhere, have indicated that they have a real sense of community. They understand this notion of targeted housing not only affects them and will help them, but also is essential for us to maintain or to encourage the diversified stock of housing, not just in terms of number of bedrooms, but also cost. This is not easy to do, because we are facing market forces that are very often, not necessarily, and very rarely, under the town's direct control. So whether or not this can be considered to be an attempt to address a piece of the problem, it's not the only piece that will, that can be brought forward. But for seniors and others, especially those who work for the town and cannot necessarily afford the four-bedroom, $700,000-plus houses that are going up around in other developments, which are fine, there are other things that can be constructed and with a, which would stimulate, we hope, developers' interest, investors' interest, and of course, lenders' interest. So it's, it opens the question. It may consider, as we move down the road with targeted housing, it would be probably worthwhile for the Planning Board to consider opening up a forum on various ways in which, various venues with the town residents, to try to understand a little bit more clearly what the various needs in the town really are in terms of housing. We have a pretty good picture of it. I think the further down this board is able to get into the detail of it, the better off our planning and actions can go. Have the next one. I've already talked about the significance of assessing how space is used in this building, and I won't dwell on it any further, except it's very, very important that this process be completed and action be taken as a result of that assessment. Have the next one. I've also mentioned already the historic survey, and as I said, that's nearing completion, and hopefully, all that will be available for the town to consider and use. So I'd like to just emphasize again, these projects don't belong to the master plan. They belong to the town. They happen to come from the master plan. And I'm hoping the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen continue their support and take the lead in integrating what the town has indicated they wish to have in the plan as part of the, shall we say, normal operation. Have the next one. Now, at the moment, our committee has inherited from the steering, the left, shall we say, the residue of what the steering committee spent on the consulting operation of $35,400. We're looking for $50,000, a total of $100,000 is requested in this. The actual cost for the consultants is actually unknown. However, we plan not to exceed $50,000 each. Additional consultants may be required. We're going to have a preference for the best available at the price. We're hoping at these price points that we can attract the kind of a talent we need to address these very challenging issues that we're facing. Finally, we've made an administrative request to the Board of Selectmen to form a transportation coordination, coordinating committee. And that's essentially where we are as of today. I think, is there another slide on here? I think it pretty well summarizes and covers an update of what we've done. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You've done well. You've been busy.
It was a good presentation. I think if you stick around, you'll hear a little bit more about the senior housing.
That's what I'm here.
Any comments, questions for anybody?
Mike, how, you said that each, each of the various members of the implementation committee were assigned tasks to do. How often will you meet, and how will they, how are they, how are they going to perform?
The way we're doing it is, we're going to obviously ask the committee chairs to meet with representative from our committee. And basically, not everybody, believe it or not, has gone through this book. I mean, I know it's shocking, but they have not. And not everyone understands or has gotten to the back of it to see what the recommendations are. And by the way, the recommendations, if you have a chance to look, also include suggestions made by the steering committee and by the consultants about which particular parts of the town government, et cetera, commissions, would be most appropriate for each task. So we're starting with that, but that doesn't necessarily mean that a particular committee, upon seeing something in here that makes sense to them, they want to, as it were, take it on as their project. But we are going to depend heavily, this is the way, we're, one of several ways that we're going to reach out to the community, and that includes all the major and minor ones. And we hope to cycle, be able to visit each one of them at least twice to three times a year. Because remember, the committee should be working on this project. We want them to work on this, not necessarily spend wonderful meeting times with us.
Great. Who will be, like, managing the whole process, or who's going to be the, on top of everything?
I will.
Oh, good. Good.
All right, I'm glad that, all right. We'll have a discussion about that one.
That's great. I'm reassured.
Well, you'll continue to support, you'll continue to get the support of the Planning Board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mike, thank you very much for volunteering your time for this.
We're way behind schedule. 7:50, O'Neill Cinema Sign logo discussion.
No, get out.
Perfect. Next.
Tim Howard, Replant Strategies. So very quickly, more exciting things to talk about. I'll walk you through the package. So the first picture of O'Neill Cinemas you see there, just to give some backstory, what we'd like to achieve, was the first presentation we gave you when we did a modification that brought the cinema in. And if you look on the left side of the page, you see the giant OC logo, which is about almost half the size of that wall, which is almost 50-foot-high wall. The next page was the most recent image that we had provided a few months ago in an update of what O'Neill's is trying to do for the building, the final design. This is what in front of Roland in the Building Inspector's Office with the building. And a question came up with the signage. They submitted the signed package for all the signs you see here, and there was one piece that caught Roland's eye, and that is that same left corner, the logo with the O'Neill next to it. And when we first got the special permit for the project, as you know, we have our own sign criteria for the shopping center to help promote retailers and whatnot to come in, meet what, you know, their requirements, also while preventing some hokey cardboard sign, if you will. So one of the pieces of language is that no logo shall be larger than the text, the lettering next to it, which is exactly what you see here, unfortunately, with the logos a little bit larger. Some of the options, you know, they did examine where that large logo, the architects who did this just felt that it gave it a little more focus, so there was some design intent there. But what we're asking really is just for, because of the scale of the building, you know, the language is intended for smaller retailers, that this, this one, that this sign shown here does still meet the intent of the zoning, to prevent a nice, a good project and a good product for the town, sort of the starting point. So that's the concern with the O'Neill sign for now. And then I have another sign I'd like to present after that, but I'll stop.
Well, if you don't get your way at this one, you're going to show us another one?
No, a different, a little bit of a different issue on the next one, which is on the other pages for the talk, but...
I would tend to agree with Tim. If it were any smaller, it would look out of proportion with that huge wall. I saw, I was looking at the wall yesterday, so I agree.
Yeah. And I will say, we're a little under, the general guideline of the signage was two square feet of signage per linear foot of frontage. We're about 100 square feet short of what's allowed with this, so they haven't necessarily maxed out what they could. They could, you know, increase that size a little bit.
Only if the name was longer.
If the name was longer, they'd be in...
The size of it is still, it's, what's, nine feet? I'm sorry.
The circle is nine feet.
And the total wall is 50 feet?
50 feet high.
It's a big wall.
What's that percentage wise of?
The frontage along the front of the building is 170 feet, I believe. And we're just under 250 square feet. And we're at just under 250 square feet of signage.
And so you actually.
I think the logo is in scale with the construction of the building.
Which one, though? This one, the blue?
This, this is the one on the.
That's the one you're looking at right there?
Yes. And that's, that's the one they'd like to do. The one on the previous page was just sort of a.
A big OC.
A big giant.
You're asking for the world to settle in for what you really want? Is that what you're doing here?
I would make a motion to, that the O'Neill sign, as, as presented on this drawing, April 20, 2017, is, meets the intent of our sign by law.
For the shopping center.
For the shopping center.
Shopping center sign.
Yeah, for the shopping center.
It's not going to be multicolored, correct?
Nope.
No flashing lights?
Colors you see there, nothing flashing.
So that's a steady glow.
The ones that, I mean, before I. Yeah. Sign for drinking.
So that's, that's my.
I have a second, huh?
That's my motion, we have a second, looks like.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go away.
Thank you. Can I ask you one more? A couple pages later?
Yep.
Sorry, quick sign. So this is the Asian restaurant that's been building out.
This isn't on the agenda, is it?
Get him out.
Push me off for a minute.
No, keep going. We're having fun, we don't care what's going to happen.
Good God, the two former chairs keep taking over.
I won't, I, I won't either. Okay.
Okay, similar, similar question with the, with the signage. So this restaurant submitted this signed package to the town, they pushed back on some text that was there, and actually what you see was what was approved that's there. And the, the tenant is satisfied, you know, they're, they wanted to see a little more, but they would be happy putting this up and moving forward. But we, as a developer, actually, the problem we had here was, it becomes a little unbalanced. So what they had asked for was the Taka, no one really knows what Taka is, you can see on the left side of the picture, they had Asian cuisine. This is also going to be a hibachi restaurant and a sushi restaurant. And they wanted to have those three items, Asian cuisine, hibachi, sushi, with the name somewhere. So what we had hoped to do was at least get those three pieces allowed. And what we would do is to the right side, that space that's there, on the right side of the tower in that photo, is also their space. So to put some other text there, so that you have a balanced facade. Again, the language that was pushed back in the, in the sign criteria was that merchandise and whatnot should not be included in signage. And I think the intent was that they don't put up steak teriyaki and tuna rolls, but the fact that they're doing this as Asian cuisine and hibachi restaurant, I think is.
So I'd make the motion that the Taka sign meets.
Richard, before you go down the motion, I just want to see if anybody else wants to have any discussion on it.
I'm good.
So, Peter?
The middle one stays exactly the way it is.
Middle one stays as it is.
One on the left, as we're looking at it, Asian stays.
Correct.
Way to the right, you'll have it centered above, is that another door entrance or just a?
No, that's just a window, it's approximately the same size as what's on the left, sorry, it's cut off.
And that will say?
Hibachi sushi, or maybe just one of them. I'm trying to, I think we'll, we'll resubmit a full package, but I'm, I'm hoping those three words we can incorporate or be allowed to incorporate.
I thought it was two.
Richard, I'll go ahead.
Okay, all right, I, I would make a motion that the Taka sign, it's within the, the parameters of the sign, signing package that we approve for the, for the point.
With the additional signage?
With the additional wording on the, on the right-hand side to match the left-hand side.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The other two pages are just informational of what's coming for phase two, but.
When is on the summer schedule open?
They are still targeting October. They are.
It was October last year.
It was October last year, but they're much farther along now than they were, but they hit a little, a little bit of snacks inside. You should see the parking lot being cleared off at the end of August, so we can top coat the parking lot. We think they're going to trill, spill over into November, but they're pushing very hard to get, catch the December movie season.
We shouldn't have put aside that, it's been up for a year, so maybe let us wait a year.
Thank you for coming.
Great. Thank you very much.
No fun.
Eight o'clock. Senior affordable housing, moving the discussion forward with Judy Barrett.
Hi there.
Judy, how are you?
I'm great, you?
I'm here.
Okay, so, let's just talk about schedules, so we can then decide how we're going to proceed tonight.
Okay.
The public hearing on zoning for town meeting needs to occur when? We have a couple options, we could do it as early as September 7th meeting, or as late as the October meeting, that first Thursday in October. The reason I ask is that we're going to run into a situation here, a timing issue, where, as you know, the day that your public hearing notice hits the news, hits the newspaper, we have to have this in the hands of the town clerk's office, so people know where they can find the zoning text. So I need to get some direction from the board about how you want to proceed with the senior housing by law, and the inclusionary one, if that's going to go as well. So based on the discussions that have happened so far, I tried to kind of identify what I think are sort of three issues where, with the senior, senior residential by law, where it would be really helpful to me for you guys to just make a decision and tell me what you want to do, and then I can make modifications to that accordingly. And those three areas had to do with the minimum land area for development, the question about an age restriction, and, and what the special permit granting criteria would be. So I tried to put together a memo for you and just outline what I think these decisions are, and I'd really like to take them in the order in which they appear in this memo, unless the board prefers otherwise. I, I'm, I'm understanding better now, kind of what the concern was about, about the minimum land area, that people, some people may be concerned that a large structure is going to end up in their backyard, and of course, that was not the intent. So I think what you could do, if you want to, is just for those uses that would tend to be bigger and bulkier, assisted living, independent living, or continuing care, just have a minimum lot area that's different from the land area you would, you would require for duplexes or, or single families, small development.
Can we talk about that one first?
That's what I'm doing, that's what we're doing.
Well, that's on me. So I said it the last minute, and I'll still bring it up this way. I think those things that we just talked about.
Yep.
Are not really single ownership housing, they're really part of our zoning. In our zoning, we're allowing for nursing homes. We should put those items in our zoning, along with the nursing homes. We allow nursing homes right now, so why shouldn't we allow assisted living, independent living, or continuous care along with nursing homes? So we just put it as a allowed use here, because that's where the confusion got along at a town meeting, because people kept thinking, oh, you're going to put an apartment complex.
Well, those terms would be defined, I mean, they're not nursing homes.
But we should put it in where we have the nursing homes right now.
But they're not, they're not, they're not an institutional use. I think it's really important for people to understand, because, I mean, let me just step back for a minute. When the Census Bureau counts your population, people who live in a nursing home are considered group quarters, they're not a household. You're, anything that's assisted living or anything, that's, that's housing.
But it's, but it's the same kind, it's facility, it's just different levels of care, and, and the point is, it's not really, we're trying to create more affordable housing for seniors who want to live in housing that's pretty much common to the town of Littleton right now. And that's where the confusion comes in, when you start offering these large complexes that a developer would come in and build. That's one thing. And then the assisted, if we were going to go with senior housing for people that, there's nothing wrong with them, they just want to downsize to go to a small house, that sits there on its own. When you start bringing in a developer in who's going to own a, a complex that's in there, that should go, like I said, where the nursing homes and, and things like that go.
I, I can't make that recommendation, because from, to a planner, those are residential uses.
What does that designation do, when you said people that are in nursing? What does that do?
It's just that, that assisted living units will count as housing in your total housing stock. They're not, they're not an institutional use, people reside there. They're, they're small housing units, they are, they are.
What does that do to us as far as the state's concerned, about taxes, about population, about assessment, about whether we meet low income, does that?
They will count as housing units.
In whatever form that they are determined to be, whether it be low income or?
And if a developer comes in with a proposal for assisted living facility, we can again require affordable units.
I, I don't have a problem with how, with that part of it. The only problem I have with it is how it's done.
I understand, but I think the board is going to have to explain to people, these are residences. They are residential use, people live there, they choose to live there, they're not put there.
Right. Fine, and that's.
That's an explanation that we need to give.
Yeah, I think it's part of what you need to explain, it's, it's a residence.
It needs to be absolutely transparent and, and almost.
Sure.
You know, two times two.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do we want to establish a larger minimum lot area for assisted living, independent living, or community care facility than a minimum for senior cottage or duplex? Because right now, it's all under one, so if we want to change it, then yes, then so there's your direction, yes.
Okay, so what do you want to have for a minimum lot area for, for assisted living? You have five, you have 10 acres, you tell me.
Well, we would look at, we would look to have something like this on some of the larger parcels of land in town.
Right, so do we want to say a minimum of five acres?
Well, it should probably be progressive, because if it's a small, if it's under 20, 20 residents.
They're not going to do that for assisted living.
No.
It's not economic.
Or they got to do bigger ones, so maybe under.
Congregate you can do, very small, but assisted living is not economic at 20 units.
So then let's say 10 acres or more.
I think that's a little much.
You don't want to zone them out either, I mean.
What is, what is, what is a nominal size in other towns that you've been around that that?
Assisted living is generally, starts at 60 units, generally.
And how many acres would be necessary for something like that?
Totally depends on the town.
Well, let's just say it's not a, not a septic issue, because you still have to have the area for that if we, unless it were a septic.
Typically, because the state law used to say, um, five-acre minimum for elderly housing, that went away years ago, but people still hang on to it. I see five acres all the time, so.
That would be an affair assessment, if, for us to put it down as?
It would be typical.
Let's say.
And I think we were trying not, I think we originally, well, so when we originally looked at this, we were looking to use smaller parcels of land, so we could keep these developments closer to the common.
That's right.
So we were looking for the ability to reduce it and still put a large, a maximum amount of units that are considered housing stock in the common.
So we can actually.
Just giving you the history.
Yeah, so we can make a, we can make a minimum that's smaller than five.
That's what I originally had, but I was getting a sense that there was some discomfort with that, so.
It's, again, how many can we put on it, and what's going to be, we can, I think the smaller the number, then we still have a choice to say yes or no, but if it's a six, and we got no choice, we say yes to five.
Again.
So how about four? I recommend four.
Okay.
It's up to you.
So what I want to do is, I want to, I want to go, okay, I want to make a comment.
Sorry.
Going back to our master plan implementation committee and what they're talking about, as far as what makes the most sense for the town. So if a proposal comes in on a two-acre parcel on the outskirts of town, it doesn't make sense for the town. If a proposal comes in for a two-acre parcel near the common, where they can get services and it becomes walkability, and they can get transportation, then it might make sense. So I think when we restrict it to acreage as opposed to what fits the town, that's why I think we shouldn't really be setting a limit less than two or two and a half acres. It's still up to the, up to the planning board to, to decide whether it fits the, if it's the best interest of the town. So that's why I don't want to go to five, I want to keep it what we originally had, understanding why. Listen, if they propose it on Taylor Street, I'm going to say no. If they propose it in the common and it makes sense, I'm more apt to say yes. Again, it also taxes, might tax the sewer, who knows?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Please, Richard.
Which is almost, it, it's kind of a segue on, on what you're, you're talking about. Judy, is, this is going to be, this is a direct amendment, zoning amendment, right? Is there any reason why we couldn't make this as a, an overlay? And because, and the reason I ask that is because with an overlay, we can, we have, already have language in, in, I think, the common district that, that gives the planning board, it's language that says, we can refuse a project if it doesn't fit the neighborhood.
Well, you can do that with a special permit, you don't need an overlay to do that.
All right, so then either way, we can, we can refuse a project that doesn't fit the neighborhood.
It's all a special permit.
If it's incompatible with the neighborhood, yeah.
All right, so, so that, you know, that, right there, would preclude putting a massive housing building or housing project right next to a, you know, a group of single-family houses.
Well, I guess my only concern is, you know, you don't want to have a failure at town meeting again, and if people are really concerned about a big structure, maybe where they feel like it wouldn't be appropriate, I don't think the board is out of line saying, if you're going to build a larger structure, you need more land. I just don't think that you're out of line saying that, and I don't think five acres is out of line, but that's just my opinion as a planner.
Then I'm, I'm in agreement with, with Ed, that maybe two, maybe three.
Right, it's a special permit, so we can look, because they don't want to limit.
Right now, it is two.
Right.
It's two now.
That's what we originally proposed, and I think that's some of it.
But I'm just trying to respond to what I'm hearing is a concern from people, and I'm trying to help you succeed.
Boy, there aren't too many lots around center of town that are two acres.
But people can assemble land, if it's economic to do a project, they'll assemble it.
Okay, that's a good point.
And they do all the time.
I think there's some comments from the audience.
I think, I've got two comments.
For the record?
Sherri, go for the record. I liked where Mark was going with the idea that you have in your bylaw now, under residential uses, the nursing home with a footnote two. And if you were to put the more institutional, the buildings like continuing care and, help me, Judy, with the words.
Assisted living.
Assisted living, and the third one is independent living. If you had those three under there with the similar footnote two, footnote two, which is now for nursing homes, says things like, it has to be 600 feet from a street line, it's got to be 200 feet from the sideline, and it's got to be 10,000 square feet for each bed, you could replace that with each bedroom. And then I think you start approaching, if there's 60 units averaging development, you start approaching what looks like a three-acre minimum for these things. And, and that's sort of in the direction, I think, that Mark was going, without saying it's two acres or it's four acres. And the only other point I want to make is, Ed, I don't want you to think about discounting Taylor Street, because it's not downtown, because if we get a transportation system through the master plan, or if one of these independent living situations has regular transportation to downtown, why wouldn't people want to live on Taylor Street and be walking to the train and things like that?
Absolutely, at that point, you know, right now, you know the transportation, so right now, Taylor Street, in my mind, would be, if transportation comes in and we make that, all economical on the floor.
But the facility could bring the transportation in, so.
If the facility wants to propose transportation.
Think that the only place for this is downtown, is plenty of places.
I don't, I don't. I'm an open-minded individual.
I would recommend that that kind of footnote is probably very appropriate, but I would still not classify this as a nursing home, because it's not.
No, make a new category that says assisted living under nursing home.
I mean, it would be a residential use.
It's in residential uses.
It's in residential, no, that's what I'm pointing, leave it in residential.
And it should be.
It would be a separate use, but it's part of the senior housing by law.
Right. Well, no, it's not really, that's, that's kind of the point, it's not really part of the senior housing by law. Those are, you're trying to get more services in the town of Littleton. Those are not really senior housing by law, those are asking developers to come here and give us more services. I see senior housing by law as the ability to, to bring different styles of housing to the town of Littleton, to meet the financial needs of the people that still want to come in and can get around and do stuff on their own, but can't afford the $700,000 houses anymore. We need to go back to the small little houses we used to have down along the lake, the little two-bedroom houses that were 150,000, 200,000, stuff like, we need to figure a stuff like, we need to figure a way, and the way we're going to do it is by density, to build smaller, single family or condos or duplex, things like that for smaller things that are not complex per se. That's a different piece.
It's fine. Do you want to just have in the table of uses a new use category and not have that part of the senior housing bylaw?
That's what I think you need to do.
Okay, but I, I hear you, I'm asking everybody else, because I just want some direction.
Mr. Chair, can I just make another suggestion? A smaller subcommittee working on this, I know Cindy, you've been very involved, I know you've been very involved, it doesn't seem like the whole planning board forum once a month is the correct way to bring this bylaw to a place where it can get to town meeting. I think a bunch of us should work more frequently in a subcommittee to fine tune all this, because we all have different ideas, and many of them from experience, especially the seniors in the room, they didn't get heard at the last town meeting, and they're desperate for service.
They didn't get heard because it was moved to the end of the agenda, and it was very late at night, and a lot of people left.
I understand that, but they also didn't get heard because it wasn't big enough.
We've also been, we've been working on this for over a year, I mean, to create a subcommittee now would just delay the, the implementation of a senior housing bylaw. So, I'm, I'll, I'll take the pleasure of the board, if you guys want to take this section out, or if you think it should be left in, and we can, we can move forward. I like the idea of a subcommittee, it would have been great to propose it a year ago.
Well, I don't think it's too late to meet a couple of times.
It's still not late, it's supposed to be in spring town meeting, it doesn't, you know, I mean, we're actually a fall town meeting, but we still have spring town.
So I've said it, I've said it at almost every meeting I'm at, it's the most important thing I can do as a chair of this board, is to get this bylaw approved, okay? It's the most important thing we can do.
So, is it the pleasure of the board to kind of re conceive this article as, as you've described, sort of small housing units that are dense, and then add to the table of uses assisted living, independent living and so forth, and just treat them as, and not really bring it under the umbrella of this bylaw, is that what you're saying?
I think that's Mark's, that's Mark's recommendation.
That's my, that's my take on it.
This, um, but we, by going down that road, where, will we be limiting, eliminating the two family houses and the townhouses?
No, that's a separate, separate part of the whole.
No, I think what I'm hearing Mark say is that those more understandable residential uses would be covered under Article twenty-three, which they are, it's the intent of the bylaw now, and that rather than having all senior housing together in one section of the bylaw, you would sort of take these out and just put them in the table of uses. I mean, it still raises the question of, you need dimensional regulations, but, I mean, so then-
Yeah, why would we want to take them out?
Well, that's up to you guys, but I, I guess I just need to underscore, I need-
Because directors at town meeting couldn't distinguish between large box garden style apartments, multifamilies, and two families. Their minds couldn't wrap themselves around it.
My foreb, my foreb, but they still couldn't.
You know, I do, I do think it's kind of unfortunate, but if that's the case, then that's the case, I don't want to argue about any of that, I just want direction, and so, you know, I think that, you know, the, the thing that is a little bit sad about this is that, that what we think about as senior housing today works for a certain population, it doesn't necessarily work for people who are much older and frail. They're not going to move into what you're talking about, but they're in your community, and so, that's why I'm just saying that I think you need, if, if that's what you need to do to get this through, then, then do it, but I think it's a very narrow way to think about what senior housing is.
It's, first, it's-
I've, I've come to a number of these meetings, I'm on the COA Housing Subcommittee, and I have heard so many different perspectives, but I'm totally confused, which is probably why the town meeting, nothing was approved. With what's being proposed on these papers here, let me ask a question. With what's proposed now, in my humble confusion, would it meet what you've just said about being able to build a variety of houses at a quote, affordable rate for some senior like myself who wants to downsize because my kiddies are gone and my husband and I can't afford the eight hundred thousand dollar house? Would it, would it supply that? Would it supply what Judy is talking about, which is a more expanded facility that would build for independent housing and possibly assisted living? Not all at once, obviously, because one, the town probably can't afford it, we don't have the land problem for one thing, but, and you're, are you, we gonna, can we even get a contractor who's going to be able to say, I'm not going to take that, one is not going to be profitable to me anyway? So you have that to deal with. But would it meet your need, would it meet her need, would it meet being able to build an apartment complex like we have on Shattuck Street?
So if I, so if I can answer?
Yes.
The idea, the, I, the idea of this bylaw would meet all those requirements, the assisted living, the small housing units, with all of this with, it may not be all on one site, you might have a cluster of small housing developed somewhere in town.
It could scatter its road to town.
Correct.
It's a menu.
But it would meet all of the needs of all of the, all of the housing that we've been talking about.
All focused on senior housing, yes, that's the whole point of this, is that it's from senior to end of life care somewhere in this town.
And it might be age targeted, it might not just be senior.
That's, that's the next, that's the next discussion, but you're right, I mean-
So you're right, you're going down the right road, that's, we're trying to-
That's the whole point.
It's a menu, we're trying to cover all the bases with this bylaw, so that we can make sure we provide housing, small cluster to large buildings where you can-
We can meet the needs of each and every individual.
Thank you.
I mean, you know, I want to go, when I, I want to just go back to what you asked me to do.
Right.
You asked me to give you a more effective senior housing bylaw.
Exactly.
And, as a planner, and as one who does a lot of this kind of zoning, part of what I hear when a client asks me to do that is, let's all understand what the term senior housing means, because it doesn't mean what it meant in nineteen ninety-five when Congress passed the Housing for Older Persons Act. We are in a different place now, and we have many seniors for whom a small, single family cottage is no longer appropriate, we have other seniors for whom it is appropriate. But if you only want to provide for a small subset of the population, then don't do any of this.
Right.
But if you really want to talk about your seniors as a whole, and those seniors who are, you know, in an aging process now, then I think there is some public education that needs to happen here about what do we mean when we talk about senior housing? It's a continuum, it's a continuum, it's, it's everything that you just talked about, but right now you don't provide for all of that.
At town meeting, at town meeting, we need to make this a simple presentation that says-
And you're going to present it.
This bylaw says, this bylaw is going to include A, B, C, D, very simple, so the rest of us out there in the, in the audience will understand what it, I don't think we understood it in May.
The reason I want to, the reason I want to split it is because I want to make it easier for the, when we go to town meeting, for the people at town to understand, okay, this is a housing issue here for somebody who wants to put more small housing, that's over here. The institutions that want to come in and build a complex, they're going to be allowed by right, it'll be in our zoning, they're allowed by right to go into certain areas with certain design criteria.
You take it out of the special permit, you got to take it out of the special permit process.
No, it's still, it'll still be by special permit, but it'll be in a-
Then leave it, then leave it inclusive with, with, with that, I don't, I don't agree with you.
I, I, I say we leave it inclusive too.
I think we leave it inclusive, and that way it gives us the entire-
It's a simpler presentation.
Yeah, Gino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you have, emphasizing your bylaw that you can, many, many citizens do not even qualify for what you like to do, in your bylaw, would you qualify like having some property given to the, from, from the town, given it to the state, so they can build housing for the senior, they can't afford, really, to live anywhere, and their income could be fifteen thousand to twenty-four thousand dollars?
Under the, under, under a special permit?
Under a special permit.
Under a special permit, when we're granting these to developers?
Right.
We can make these units either affordable, low income, we can request all these things in the special permit, so to answer your question, yes, we can provide affordable and low income housing through this bylaw, special permit.
The question is, the housing that will be provided by the state. I know that at the town meeting he says, we don't need any assistance from the state, but there's people here that don't have enough money.
That's not what I said.
Yeah, 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 that's okay.
Well, I, I think I can answer the question, this is zoning, this is purely zoning, this isn't about who owns the land, this is simply creating a regulatory mechanism to be able to develop housing at a certain density for certain populations.
I'm talking about perfect. You say zoning, the question is, the state will allow to build housing for the senior, but the state also wants the town to donate a piece of property for-
Okay, but that's what I was, this is about.
That's part of this discussion.
That's not what this is about.
You're not in the right discussion right now, Gino, we understand, we understand how passionate you are about giving a piece of land.
Would they include it in the bylaw, would it be included?
But this doesn't deal with land ownership.
Okay, so that's part of it.
This has nothing to do with the town owning land.
You need to deal with the two people sitting in front of you to try to get a piece of land and see what the state wants to do with it.
These two people here, at due time, I will mention it.
Okay.
Pamela Campbell, Director of Elder and Human Services. It's really obvious to me that Judy has a great deal of experience and knowledge, and you have hired her to try to help us to be forward thinking. It makes me want to lean towards following her advice about making it clear that this is a variety of senior housing, and that it does need to be called out as a, a, a separate entity, the senior housing bylaw. I'm sensitive to what Gino's talking about, that it's a whole nother discussion about affordability and subsidized housing, and how we'll make something happen that's at the next level, but I, I have a feeling that in order to really move the whole discussion forward in town, that we do need to think very much this century about what we're talking about in terms of, of housing and changes in our zoning. So I, I lean towards the idea of keeping this together to make it clear that it is very different from a hospital, a nursing home, a skilled nursing facility, that those are really different entities.
So, on, on item one of the agenda for tonight's discussion on this, I would say as is.
Okay.
Two acre.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be, that would be the recommendation of the board, that's mine, your-
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with the way-
I'm fine.
Right.
Okay, good with your explanation, I appreciate that, thank you.
I have a, uh, one, one question to all of this. Judy, under uses, you've got senior, this is one seventy-three, one forty-seven, uses, it says senior residential development in residence, common, village, common, common, or business district, shall include one of the more of the following, yet up above, you're, you include, uh, business district, industrial A and industrial B, why, why don't we include the industrial A and B down below?
Because, um, in an earlier discussion, the board was concerned about having large structures in the, uh, you know, to sort of favor a particular area where there's already sort of larger structures for a larger development like assisted living, that's my recollection, am I forgetting something here?
But see, it's-
That was under, under board direction? That was under board direction?
Yeah, this was discussed earlier.
Yeah, well, after, after-
It was actually a recognition that smaller housing units probably would not be compatible with-
That's what it was, we didn't want to put smaller housing units in-
Yeah, you wouldn't want to put smaller housing units in an industrial zone.
It was to keep the smaller housing units out of the industrial zone.
Specifically, I'm looking at the area south of the train station, going all, all the way to the Barksborough Line, there's a, there's a whole section there that's owned by Cisco, it's no development in there. Now, we couldn't, if we wanted to, we couldn't put two family houses in there, right now, according to this, but if we allowed two family houses in the industrial A and B, then, then we could, uh, we, we could, if a developer were to come into town, said, what do you want to do? We could put houses up there, and halfing houses up there, so close to the train station and transportation.
Right, but I think if it was, maybe something else would be better.
But why wouldn't we want to allow for single family houses in that area?
Right, the way the bylaw is written now, the process would be both a use variance from the zoning board of appeals and the planning board's special permit, so the town could have that discussion, but it would be the double permitting on it.
Except this-
And had we not had this discussion before-
Can we, can we do this, can we get through the issues that I know I most need direction on?
There's other policy issues you want to discuss, it's fine, I don't want to stop that, but I really need direction on a couple of things.
Yep, so you got one, let's go to age restriction.
Age restriction, so this is entirely your call, and I, I don't want to push something on you that you're not comfortable with, I mean, I, you know, I suggested age targeted by design, I'm gathering that there's some discomfort with that, and so I tried to lay out in this memo, you know, here are your choices, you can either go with the proposal as it is, which is not to require a deed, age, deed to age restriction, but to go with age targeting. You can think about putting a size restriction on the single family or two family, you know, homes, which might, oh, you know, alleviate some concern about who would live in them, and, but still go with the age targeted approach. You can require an age restriction for everything, I mean, clearly you can do that if you want. The only thing I would say is, be careful what you ask for. If you're going to require an age restriction, my strong recommendation is that you say exactly what Congress passed, which is, at least one person in the household has to be fifty-five or over, but, I mean, you can require an age restriction, if that's what you want to do.
That ties our hands drastically, doesn't it?
Well, there's some issues, let me just finish these, then we can talk about them. You could just say, we're only going to require a deed to age restriction for the small units, this, the condo, you know, the townhouses or the single family homes, because the reality is, you can't operate assisted living in Massachusetts without being certified, and you can't get the certification from Elder Affairs unless you meet all, a variety of requirements, one of which is, this is geared for people who are sixty-two or over, or who have a disability regardless of age, I mean, that's the certification, so you almost don't need to worry about those larger developments, it's the smaller units where people might have some concern about who's going to live there, so-
But even then, I mean, we've seen a lot of fifty-five and elders fail, so it would be my opinion-
I understand, that's why I-
Right, so, it would be, it would be my opinion that we shouldn't age restrict it, we should just build it age appropriate, and at the same time, you know-
You know, the-
It allows, it also allows for, for diversification in the, in the development as well.
Yeah, but you might, you might want to consider putting a size limit on those smaller units, you know, I, I think that, that's not an, that's not an inappropriate thing to consider.
What would be an appropriate size?
Two bedrooms.
And that's, we're, we're talking about one seventy-three dash one forty-nine, right?
We're, we're on the memo.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, what I would say, frankly, if we, if you wanted to go that route-
Who's the hand that?
What, what I would recommend is if you want to go that route, we'll add a new use class, not to drug everybody nuts, but perhaps have a class of use called senior cottage. And that way you don't get into any issue about limiting the size of single family dwelling, single family dwelling can be whatever it is, but for purposes of senior residential development, the permitted uses would be, um, a senior cottage, a duplex, or a townhouse, all of which would be restricted to a maximum of two bedrooms.
I love it.
And that way, you know, I think you get at sort of, I mean, it's not the perfect solution, but it, in the minds of people who are worried, but I think, you know, the, the planner in me says, uh, we talk a lot in this industry about sustainability, and part of that is sort of not setting policies today that just benefit us but might have cost consequences or other consequences for the next generation.
Right.
Whether it's environmental or something else, and I, I worry that we're creating a consequence for the next generation's going to have to figure out what to do, when we keep putting age restrictions on units, when we know the size of the next demographic bubble after I'm dead, is not going to be as large as the seniors that we have now. So, I, I just think it's appropriate to think about designing an environment, and thinking about form, and not being quite so hung up on age, but that's me, you know, and-
I think it makes sense, it's forward thinking.
Well, that's how I see it, but it's your town, and I'm trying not to push my bylaw.
I like that idea, with, can, can-
So, any other discussion on this one?
I think the only problem with, by not putting an age on it, you're, the problem of, the seniors are going to be boxed out of it more, if you have more people that aren't seniors trying to buy these units, there's going to, there's going to be more of a demand to get the prices up.
Once again, that's, that's a planning board issue, we can turn around and say, they're going to build fifteen of them, we're going to say five of them, they're going to be age restricted to this, to this point, we have that, we have that, correct?
We could, we could limit that.
Then we have that opportunity.
You could, we could say in the zoning, the planning board may in its discretion require a deed to age restriction, and leave it-
And once again, if you put the age to it, then we've, we've tied the hands of the developer, correct?
Yes.
And they're not going to come in if they're not going to say-
Well, this was my only other comment, that if you decide you do want to require an age restriction, I think, I strongly recommend that you provide a provision for the planning board to waive it, because you don't want to put somebody in the position where they can't sell you, that's the only remedy, is to go to the Board of Appeals for a use variance, I mean, that just doesn't make any sense.
I'm not in favor of age, age restriction, you've got age appropriate, that's fine for me.
Good, good call.
Any, any comments from the audience on this one? Okay.
All right, good, so-
Age appropriate.
Okay, all right, I mean, I, okay, so that's fine. So then, I also heard there was some concern about maybe tightening up the decision criteria for the special permit. So, you know, I've been pretty broad. I'm a firm believer in if it's a discretionary permit, you give the permitting authority discretion. But I'm also trying to be sensitive to the fact that some people want a little more sense of how you're going to make a decision. So I've put in this memo some suggested decision criteria where if someone comes to you with an application for senior housing, you've got to make certain findings in order to grant that special permit. These would not be out of line considerations for you.
Right, social, economic, traffic.
Yeah, I mean, some of this is right out of the zoning act, and some of it is really specific to, you know, a larger project or something that would be denser than what's around it, that would be these added considerations.
Very nice.
Does that work for you?
Yes.
Yeah, the design criteria and the more definitions that we have or more detail we have.
So you want to add these things at the.
I would be adding it to the special permits section, just, you know, the board, before the granting of the special permit, the board has to make the following findings. I mean, you know, certainly I think you, you want to be able to convince your community that they're not going to just hand out permits like candy even in an area where they perhaps don't belong, so.
So these are considerations. It doesn't mean that we have to abide.
You would have to make a finding.
You'd have to make a finding.
You would have to make a finding on these.
Well, look, if it says reduce the number, remove trees six inches in diameter or larger.
It says you could not reasonably alter the project too. So if it's not commercially reasonable, it's not commercially reasonable. But to sort of make the statement, you know, this is an expectation. We're going to, we want you to try not to do certain things. Well, one is we want you to try not to strip a site of all of its mature vegetation. So think about this when you're planning your site plan, guys, that, you know, we don't want something just clear cut. I mean, those are appropriate in a rural town like, a small town like this. I don't think that's out of line at all. You'll be well within your rights as a board to do that.
I'm good with this too.
Sorry, we kept you solely, Judy. Thank you for your information. So your direction on this one, I like what you put in.
So you want me to add these criteria to the draft?
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Yes.
I know you're upset about the one, but let it go.
No, I'm fine with the one.
I would only ask that on the age for appropriate, limited to, I don't know, maybe we shouldn't limit it to one, two families.
I guess I wasn't talking.
No, I would say, I would say instead of just, you know, single-family home has a particular meaning. And I just think that if we're going to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to address concerns. And I don't think it's out of line to say a senior housing development could be senior cottages, duplex, or townhouse, but those will have a particular meaning in this context, and that one of the considerations is there's a size limit. I don't think that's out of line.
Okay.
Size limit works.
Back on the uses, as we jumped past it, I was going to talk about uses. Why wouldn't we want to include industrial A and industrial B? I think we should so that we're not taking away a whole section of town that these things could go in.
Why don't you say first if there's a demand for it there?
Right, we could still grant it just as a two-step process as opposed to a single step, that's all.
You can't grant it in industrial A or B.
Yes, you can. You can through the ZBA and a special permit.
Yeah, that's, you know, and the idea of something like this is to make it as easy, as easy as possible so that someone comes in and tells us a great project, and they say that's where they'd like to do it. I would say no developer.
The way this is written right now, you would not be doing the smaller units in the industrial district.
Right, that's right.
You're right. You can get it by a host community agreement or a variance through the ZBA.
Right.
And if all the boards were in agreement that that was a good place for it, it would be really easy to make a recommendation to the ZBA.
Well, I mean, but ZBA can do it. I'm just saying, pervert of a special permit.
Well, like, I'm envisioning a, like a little planned community up there.
I know. I know what you're envisioning, and I understand. In fact, it was proposed, and we all liked it. The boards could get together and approve it.
Yeah, but no developer's bright mind is going to come through, come into a town like ours and knowing they have to go through the ZBA and a plan.
They would. They do all the time.
They do it all the time. You've got to go to ZBA for a variance and then a site plan review to plan for it. You do all that.
And as long as, as long as a selectman, by the post-community agreement, it all happens.
We're trying to make it simpler for these things to happen.
Cindy Napoli, Board of Selectmen, Springfield Drive. I just have one question. With restricting it to one and two bedrooms, how are we going to guarantee affordability for the seniors currently living in town that want to downsize?
There's a separate bylaw that's being discussed about inclusionary zoning.
Right, and the inclusionary zoning, but through that also, I mean, if they're proposing one and two-family housing with one or two bedrooms, you get it through cluster development. You get it through smaller houses in a denser area.
Right, no, I understand that. But how are we going to guarantee that they're going to come in?
Through a special permit. Well, they will come in. I can assure you they'll come in. And when they do, we can ask for some affordable, some low income.
There's a separate inclusionary zoning bylaw that's also pre-discussed.
Okay.
That would allow the board to require some affordable units.
We're not going to give you a higher density unless you're going to give us a lower price. That's how it's going to work.
Yeah, but you can't restrict the price of all the units.
No, 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 I agree.
They're going to be selling their house, so they'll have the money.
Right, you see, this is the benefit to us dragging it as opposed to the state. Is that the ones that, they get to keep all their money, and there's no qualification in the state. You have too much money.
Right, no, I understand that piece of it. I just want to make sure that they are going to be affordable.
They will be.
Benefit to the people currently living in town, so to speak.
We need to discuss the inclusionary zoning bylaw too. I mean, your point's well taken. This, we separated them for a couple of reasons, but.
With all that we're trying to take on, I feel like this is a spring meeting, including our zoning. I just feel like we're.
That's up to you guys. I was asked to put this together as a package, and that's what I've done.
I understand.
I'm going to push back now.
Okay, please do.
One.
As chair, I'm feeling overwhelmed. I am trying to raise kids, do my job, and answer 50 emails every day that I volunteered for. It's killing me, so. I'm just saying that lighten the load. It'd be terrific.
I think packaging the senior residential development with the inclusionary housing zoning bylaw addresses the applications we should get, you know, before Springtown meeting. If anybody applies now, they don't have to include affordable units.
Gotcha. Okay.
So advantages to put them together now.
We've been working on this for two or three years.
If you were not going to try to go forward with inclusionary zoning now, then I would have to say to you that we need to add an affordability provision to this, which right now is not in here because we were going to do the inclusionary zoning piece.
I withdraw my statement.
Okay. Sorry.
I've been beaten into submission.
Find a second win, will you?
The town's winning, just because you feel like you've lost a little bit. The town is what's winning now. It's okay.
I'm okay with it. I want the town to win. That's why I want to do this. I understand the point now, and I agree with them.
Judy, we got one more thing?
Take some of this load.
On this memo, no. I mean, you've given me the direction on these three points that I was the most concerned about.
Okay, good. And inclusionary zoning, we're past that.
Well, no, we need to discuss that. I have no direction on that.
But you're giving us an example of a bylaw.
I gave you a draft to respond to, right.
Yeah, and is this pose similar, is this to what was proposed at town meeting?
You didn't have inclusionary zoning.
You have never done this, Richard.
You've never done.
I missed the town meeting.
That's all right.
We've never even talked about this.
Okay.
Right.
Inclusionary housing, 173-196, purpose, the purpose of this bylaw. To increase the supply of housing that is available to affordable for low and moderate income households. To encourage greater diversity of housing in Littleton. And to develop and maintain housing that is eligible for inclusionary in the chapter 40B subsidized housing inventory. Definition, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Affordable Housing Unit, Affordable Housing Restriction. So the trust fund, an account established and operated by the town for the exclusive purpose of creative, creating, preserving, and rehabilitating affordable housing units in the town of Littleton. Affordable Housing Unit, a dwelling unit that is affordable to and occupied by a low or moderate income household and meets requirement for inclusionary inclusion on the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, chapter 40B. Subsidized housing inventory, affordable units shall remain as affordable units in perpetuity or for the maximum period allowed by law. Such units shall have the same construction methods and exterior physical characteristics as and be intermingled with other units in the development. Affordable housing restrictions, a contract, mortgage agreement, deed restriction, or other legal instrument accepted in form and substance to the town that effectively restricts occupancy of affordable units to a qualified purchaser or renter, which provides for administration, monitoring, and enforcement of the restriction during the term of the affordability. An affordable housing restriction shall run with the land in perpetuity or for the maximum period allowed by law and to be entered into enforceable under the provisions of, I'm going to say mass general law, I'm not going to quote what they are, or other equivalent state law. Low or moderate income HUD income limit, household income that does not exceed 80% of the area median family income. Adjust for household size for the metropolitan area that includes the town of Littleton as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Qualified affordable housing purchase or tenant, a low or moderate income household that purchases or rents and occupies an affordable housing unit as its principal residence. Anytime anybody wants to take over, by all means.
Well, I think we can summarize it. I mean, I really do.
I'm just trying to get people here to understand what we're saying.
Sure, sure. I understood completely. I mean, I got to, are these the four, five questions? Those are, those are the big questions that you have to answer with any inclusionary zoning. And I have to tell you, the draft I've given you was kind of tame because there's lots of ways to tackle inclusionary zoning. But these are the issues that you have to wrestle with. One is, what percentage of units will have to be affordable? Inclusionary percentage is probably the biggest question. Because if you worry about killing development in your town, set a percentage that's not attainable, and the developers will go somewhere else. The other is.
Number? Answer that quick.
I would not go over 10% in this town.
Okay, next.
Income targets, you know, if you want the units to count on the subsidized housing inventory, which is a big conversation in communities in Massachusetts, then you almost have to adopt the sort of income thresholds that qualify for chapter 40B. Some communities with like multifamily, which we're not proposing here, but with a multifamily development will sometimes set a lower income target for some units in order to meet the needs of people who actually live in the town. But that is sort of a discussion piece, and it becomes a bigger issue sometimes with senior housing. But put that aside for now. Income targets are, what is going to be the maximum income allowed in a project? And what alternatives are you going to allow? Some towns say, if you're going to do a project that triggers this bylaw, you have to build affordable units in your development, period. Some towns, I would say many towns, create an option for the board to approve an alternative. Like the developer, instead of building the units in his or her project, pays a fee into an affordable housing trust fund, which is the other piece of the package that Keith, I think, wanted to take to town meeting. And I blame Keith, but that was my direction. Or to do units off-site. Sometimes developers will say, you know, you've given me all the density in the world. I really appreciate it, but I can't make it work on the site because it's an odd-shaped lot. So can I do some units on the project and some in another location? The question is, do you want to give alternatives or not? That's another big issue in this kind of zoning. The fourth issue is, do you want to create incentives? In other words, is the zoning a club that says thou shalt? Or do you want to have a system where they have to sort of provide a minimum if their project triggers the bylaw, but maybe you give some incentives to do more affordability or something for certain types of development? So that's another sort of decision point. And then the final one, which I don't think is really a big discussion, but you need to be aware of it, is how long are the units going to have to be affordable? I mean, the going practice now is in perpetuity or the maximum period allowed by law, which is what the definition says. There's still some inclusionary zoning kicking around in Massachusetts that limits it to 30 years is typically for a new unit. And in some communities, there's a conscious decision made to let the affordability expire. But it's typically in poorer communities where you're actually trying to get people to buy and stay and make an investment in the town or the city. Sometimes cities will say, we'll waive the affordability restriction after 20 years or 10 years or something to get people to buy into that community. That's not an issue here, so. So those are just kind of the big points. But I think the inclusionary percentage and really the sort of kinds of projects that it's going to apply to and what the income targets are, these are sort of the big discussion points.
So I'm in favor of alternatives, and I definitely feel like you'd get more bees with honey, so.
So the way this is written right now, here's what would trigger this bylaw. Any residential development that requires a special permit from this board would require affordable units if the project resulted in a net increase of six or more dwelling units on a given piece of land. Or any subdivision with six or more lots. That's another big discussion point, by the way, is that some towns don't apply it to subdivisions. But I've got it in here because, as I said, this is, I'm trying to keep this very similar to what a lot of other communities have, knowing that there's some issues with these. But there are some exemptions, and one of which, and don't everybody yell at me, I can explain why. One of the things that's exempt under this draft would be assisted living and independent living units. Not the senior housing units in a, like a duplex or, those would be, it would apply to those. The problem with assisted living is that the state will not, has made it very difficult to count assisted living on the subsidized housing inventory. It is almost impossible to do the way the formula works now. So if your purpose statement, if one of your purposes is to create units that help the town stay over 10%, then you're saying the affordable units have to meet DHCD requirements. And that will all but kill the ability to do assisted living under this bylaw. So the trade-off is, you know, don't make those particular developments comply, but everything else would. Now, that's my opinion. It's a policy decision, but I just want you to know what's going on out there. It used to be not so hard to get assisted living on the subsidized housing inventory. It became difficult about 10 years ago. It was an ongoing issue within other town. You don't want to get caught in the middle of it. That's my opinion. So then the bylaw just simply goes on to do what typically any zoning bylaw does. It says if you've got a project that has to comply, this is what your percentage will be. This one says 10%. You can do them by putting the units in your project or approving, the board could approve a fee in lieu of, which would then go into a housing trust fund. As you know, right now you don't have an affordable housing trust in Littleton. So the third piece of this package that town meeting would be asked to approve is to create an affordable housing trust. So now if someone writes out a check, you have a way to segregate the revenue from the general fund, which you must do. But you've also got an entity that can sort of decide how to spend that money on affordable housing production somewhere else.
What's a fair assessment of the amount of money you charge somebody for not to do something?
I have, let me see, we're going to get real complicated here. What this draft says is that you could allow a fee in lieu for a small project. But if you get to be over 20 units or more, then they have to do the units in the project. Now, that's a big policy issue, and it's something.
We discussed this earlier, correct?
Yeah, well, you know what the issue is? A lot of very small developers can't deal with the bureaucracy of 40B. They just can't deal with it. And you can't blame them. So if you say everybody has to put the units on site and it's a 10-unit project, you might really discourage a developer who's got an otherwise nice project, but it's small. So the small project would be able to ask for permission to pay a fee in lieu, and the board could approve that or not. But once you hit over a certain scale, those developers tend to be comfortable enough with bureaucracy that they can deal with the affordability requirements. So that's, it's just a recommendation from me. It's, as I said, as a decision for you.
20 seems to be the number.
20, yeah. Everybody's got a different way of dealing with this. I'm just making a recommendation. And so then it's just the usual stuff of the units have to be dispersed in the project. You can't have them all concentrated in a given area. The selection of purchase of home buyers or renters has to be subject to an affirmative marketing plan so you don't end up in trouble with the Fair Housing Act. There's a procedure in here for the payment in lieu of units so that if someone chooses to come to you and requests that, it'll be clear how that gets calculated. That in itself can become very complicated. I've actually tried to keep it simple. And then you have the authority as a special permit body to adopt rules and regulations to implement.
Well, after this meeting, you know you've got to keep it simple because you've seen how simple we are.
Yeah, I mean, you really want to keep this simple.
What do you mean, yeah?
Well, no, it's hard. This is complicated stuff. It's complicated stuff. And then there's just the usual stuff at the end of, you know, they don't get a building permit until they've filed at the registry, with the registry of deeds, the documents that are necessary to protect affordability. And they don't get a CO until they've complied and so forth. I mean, you know, it's all stuff just standard in inclusionary zoning.
Standard, typical.
I mean, I can break this down for you in other ways, but I mean, mainly I need direction.
I like you.
I think the draft looks great. I do.
I think that would, yes.
I've also built in a density bonus if you want to grant it. It's not a requirement. It's a way to sort of get more units. But they wouldn't have to do it.
You did, yeah.
Yeah, it's at the end. Incentives and cost offset.
That's great, Judy.
I know you're probably feeling overwhelmed right now, but.
No, I thought that was great. Everything about it was, I got it.
This is what we asked for.
I can see it in your eyes. Yes, I can.
No, this is what we asked for.
I just returned from a five-day trip on the Alagash with my three boys. I am more than exhausted.
I see. I feel your pain.
You're on vacation?
Questions?
Pamela Campbell again, Elder in Human Services. I'm really glad that we got to this point because I do see these three pieces as a unit and as really workable. So we get the senior housing, the age targeted approach. We get the affordability piece in there, which I think in order to get some control over what I see as almost runaway development in town, we've got to get that piece in place. And then with the trust, we have a mechanism now to take those funds and to address a project like Gino would be interested in, or, you know, subsidized housing of some sort, something that would really, really be useful for very low-income people.
Right.
Sherry and I were talking about a couple of ideas to.
That's the point.
But I think all three have to come together, and I recognize that it really feels like a whole lot. But boy, I feel like we've got to do it. And Maren, I agree with you. It's got to come to fall for the meeting. We've got to get this in place.
Well, I agree. I agree with that too.
I don't think we have a lot of time in town.
Yeah, but we got pretty much done, unless anybody wants to tweak it between now and town meeting.
Well, that's what she's looking for, direction on the inclusionary, as she wrote it.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess my question would be, if you can have the public hearing as late as October, do you want to devote the September planning board, I'm coming back, to just discussing this? So that any changes you may want, you know, you guys are just hearing this for the first time. I think many of you, if you held a September meeting to discuss this.
You need a month of that.
Then, well, the October meeting could be the public hearing. I don't want to push anything on you. I just want to make sure that you have what you need for the public hearing. And I'm concerned that trying to get that done for September is probably not possible. But October, I think, is.
Good call.
But I don't see us changing any of the language here.
But you've got residents who are concerned about this, and I think you need to give.